Good evening, I would like to call tonight's meeting of the Tacoma Park City Council to order with the clerk, please call the roll.
Here, Cersei.
Here.
Councilmember Land. Here. Present.
Present. Here.
Present.
Here. Hey, good evening, everyone. Tonight, we do not have any changes to the agenda. We will have two proclamations this evening, Walk to School Day proclamation, Ban Books Week proclamation. We will also have a readout of summary from the closed session on September the 24th, 2025. This evening, our voting session includes the second reading ordinance approving FY26 budget amendment number two, single reading ordinance approving purchase of police vehicles, single reading ordinance approving purchase of two security camera trailers, resolution providing for appointments to the youth council, resolution designating Robert Dispierto as resident agent of service of process. And then we will have four work sessions this evening. The first is procurement of two public works vehicles. The second procurement of a leaf vacuum. Third, contract of stop sign cameras. And the last item is options to address noise complaints. In terms of upcoming meetings, Sunday, October the 12th through Tuesday, October the 14th, some members of council will be attending the Maryland Municipal League Fall Conference. On Monday, October the 13th, is Indigenous Peoples' Day. City offices and facilities are open. On Wednesday, October the 15th, the council will have a closed session starting at 6:30 PM. We will vote in the auditorium. It will be a closed session to receive legal advice regarding matters related to collective bargaining. On Wednesday, October the 15th, we will convene at our normal time of 7:30 here in the auditorium. We will have a presentation, the Community Quality of Life Grant Report. We will then have a series of voting items, a resolution providing for appointment of the poet laureate, a single reading ordinance approving procurement of two public works vehicles, single reading ordinance approving procurement of a leaf vacuum box. We will also have two work sessions that evening. The first is Community Connectors Program Update. And the second is Code Amendment Use of City Seal or Logo. On Wednesday, October the 22nd, the council will meet at its regular time of 7:30. We will have a proclamation in recognition of Economic Development Week. And then we will have three presentations. The first is a 2024 election report. The second is interim report of the Council Conversation Committee. Intendedly, we're slated to have a presentation on the Housing and Community Development Annual Report. We will then have a voting session that evening. The first reading ordinance amending the Tacoma Park Code regarding the use of the city seal or logos. And on Saturday, October the 25th, is Monster Bash. Okay, so with that, I'm going to move to a readout from our closed session dated September the 24th, 2025. On September 24th, 2025, the city council convened in the community center auditorium at 6:30 PM to vote to meet in closed session pursuant to Maryland Code 3-305B7 and 8 of the General Provisions Article to receive legal advice related to the Purdue Pharma and Secondary Manufacturers opioid litigation settlement. Councilmember Dabala moved to convene the closed session. Councilmember Gilbert seconded the motion, the motion carried. Voting for Mayor Cersei, Councilmember Dabala, Councilmember Gilbert, and Councilmember Westlech. Voting against Councilmember Landman, Councilmember Schlegel. Absent was capes Councilmember Hansak. The council reconvened in the council conference room for the closed meeting. Present for the closed meeting were Mayor Cersei, councilmembers Landman, Dabala, Schlegel, Gilbert, and Westlech, city manager Dispierto, city clerk Carpenter, and city attorney Cornbrooks on Zoom. Councilmember Hansak was absent. Mr. Cornbrooks provided legal advice regarding options related to the settlements. After discussion, the council agreed to authorize the city manager to enter into settlements. The meeting was adjourned at 6:55 PM. After a recess, the council reconvened in the auditorium for the regular meeting at 7:30 PM. We have two proclamations this evening. The first is Walk and Roll to School Day is Pedestrian Safety Day, Wednesday, October the 8th, 2025. Whereas the first National Walk Our Children to School Day was in 1997, and the day has become an international event with the US, Canada, and the UK since 2000. And whereas Safe Routes, National Center for Safe Routes to School promotes and organizes the annual Walk and Roll to School Day event along with its network members throughout the country. And whereas this year, the Montgomery County Public Schools Board of Education chose not to adopt the National Walk to School Day Resolution for this school year out of respect to the families and friends who have endured in the injury and loss of loved ones as a result of several recent pedestrian accidents. The board calls for reflective lessons on pedestrian safety at school. And whereas the city of Tacoma Park works with five local public schools and their affiliated parent teacher associations to teach road and traffic safety while encouraging walking and rolling across the full school community. And whereas the goal of this day is to raise awareness and support for the health, community, and environmental benefits of regularly walking and rolling to school. And whereas one of the main goals for the Safe Routes to School program is to make physical improvements to infrastructure that make walking and bicycling safer, more comfortable, and more convenient. And whereas October is recognized as National Pedestrian Safety Month with a focus on raising awareness and reducing pedestrian injuries and fatalities. And whereas Tacoma Park recognizes the importance of standing with the families and friends of those impacted by vehicular accidents and marks this year's National Walk and Roll to School Day as Pedestrian Safety Day to continue to raise awareness of pedestrian safety. Now therefore, I, Talisha Cersei, Mayor of the City of Tacoma Park, Maryland, on behalf of the council, staff, and residents hereby proclaim Wednesday, October the 8th, 2025 as Pedestrian Safety Day. And the next proclamation is in recognition of Ban Books Week, which is October the 5th through the 11th, 2025. Whereas Ban Books Week has been observed each autumn since 1982 to raise awareness of the value of free and open access to information. And whereas the number of challenges to library books continues to raise across the country, with the American Library Association's Office of Intellectual Freedom reporting that 2,452 unique titles were challenged in 2024. And whereas the majority of challenged titles are targeted for representation of marginalized and vulnerable identities, including LGBTQIA2S+ and Black, Indigenous, and people of color. And whereas in 2025, the City of Tacoma Park's City Council formally adopted advancing a community of safety and belonging as a priority in governance. And whereas the Tacoma Park Maryland Library practices collection development with the guiding principles of diversity and inclusion and is committed to keeping quality materials that represent the identities, values, and experiences of Tacoma Park residents accessible to all library patrons. And whereas the Tacoma Park Maryland Library stands in solidarity with all libraries experiencing book challenges and censorship attempts, especially our Montgomery County Public Schools colleagues at the center of the Supreme Court's June 2025 ruling on required reading for students in Mohammed V. Taylor. Now therefore, I, Talisha Cersei, sorry, Mahmood V. Taylor. Now therefore, I, Talisha Cersei, Mayor of the City of Tacoma Park, Maryland, do hereby proclaim October 5th through the 11th as Ban Books Week in Tacoma Park and encourage all residents to take part in this observance, promoting cultural understanding, inclusivity, and unity through activities, programs, and celebrations. Now we're going to move to comments on voting items. As a reminder, voting items this evening is the second reading ordinance approving FY26 budget amendment number two, single reading ordinance approving purchase of police vehicles, the single reading ordinance approving purchase of two security camera trailers, resolution providing for appointments to the youth council, and resolution designating Robert Dispierto as resident agent for service of process. Do we have any public comments on voting items this evening? Do we have any virtual public comments this evening?
Do, we have three virtual public commenters. Emmanuel Wagner. Kathleen Gundry and... Yes, those two, two for on voting items.
Great. Emmanuel Wagner, can you hear us? Mr. Hubner, just give us one second, we're going to virtual comments on voting items.
No, no rush. I'm sorry, thank you for recognizing me.
No problem. It's stuck to where it might make sense for us to allow Mr. Hubner to give his comments even though they're general.
It looks like Mr. Wagner and Kathleen Gundry are in the meeting, they just need to...
Can you hear me?
There we go.
Yes, Emmanuel, we can hear you now.
All right, yeah, I apologize, I'm in the car. So really briefly, I wanted to add on to the written comments I've provided to the council a couple of days ago related to the purchase of police vehicles. I don't want to reiterate the comments, my main focus is really to just highlight that the council last week adopted a resolution to install electric vehicle charting infrastructure at the police department. This week, we have this voting item for us to purchase vehicles for the police department. There are no electric vehicles part of that purchase program. And I believe that may be a missed opportunity to actually allow for the city to gain experience of this technology in our own fleet. I know there's concerns about the performance of these vehicles in the operation of the police fleet. And those may be well-founded. The challenge, I think, is like, we don't actually know whether or not they perform, how they perform, because we don't actually have them in our operations. So I think this is actually an opportunity to use the funds that we have allocated and purchase a pilot, one or two, or even three vehicles, and gain that experience to understand how do they perform? How can we approve upon utilizing infrastructure that the city has funded and is building by the end of the year? And, you know, get data and then allow us to make more informed decisions moving forward. So that's kind of like what I wanted to highlight, I appreciate you listening to these comments and urge the, you know, the council to just go back to staff. Maybe we can look at EV options. They have, there have been several model years now where the technology has significantly improved. And so with that, thank you so much for your attention.
Thank you very much.
Kathleen Gundry, if you're...
Yes, I'm here, hello, mayor and council members. My name is Kathleen Gundry, and I'm a relatively new resident of Ward Two and honored to be also a new member of the Green Team. Just wanted to say hi, take this opportunity to introduce myself and also comment as Emmanuel did on the purchase of three hybrid police patrol SUVs. I sent an email with detailed comments, so I will just be very brief. I just would like to have the ordinance amended to authorize purchase of at least one fully electric vehicle. Because the town is proposing to purchase vehicles instead of leasing, the city's decision would result in continued emissions from the fleet for many years, as long as you would have the vehicle. And sometimes I know cities and towns are constrained in their budgets and keep cars for a long time. At the same time, we're trying to electrify our fleet as proposed in the Fleet Electrification Report. Report. I know that I've seen police departments have evaluated earlier EV models. The Tesla was too small, it didn't accommodate all the police equipment, and they weren't necessarily as nimble as the police needed them to be. But the new Chevy Blazer is being purchased and piloted by many departments. It's designed specifically for police patrols. And I'd like to see Tacoma Park be part of this pilot trend. Our city climate goals are very aggressive, 2035 is just around the corner. Green purchasing is one action that the council has control over. So I urge you to make the choice to make progress towards an all-electric fleet, thank you.
Thank you very much. Do we have any other public comments on voting items?
Okay, great, we're going to move to general public comments. And given that we have Paul here, Paul, we're gonna let you go ahead and go first.
Well, thank you. Good evening, Paul Hubner, Ward Three. First, I'd like to know who wrote and who approved the budget survey? Was it reviewed and approved by the council? Was it publicized and made readily available to city residents? It seems not. Most everyone I know seems to have been unaware that there even was a budget survey. It also seems the survey questions did not address many of the concerns and wishes of the residents and ignored the facts on the ground. It reflected vividly the city staff's maintenance of effort budget position. This year, we will use Raff Tellis for budget development. Raff Tellis produced four budgets, a status quo, a constant yield, the city manager's recommended budget, and the city manager's recommended budget minus the CIP to avoid borrowing. Past practice here is not to borrow, but to raise taxes. Tonight, I bring a message from the many that I have met and worked with through the Village of Tacoma Park Volunteer Organization, that the burden is overwhelming. My property taxes are over $12,500 this year. Many other city residents, especially seniors, who make up 15% of our city population, are similarly burdened. I have three friends in this city who lost their jobs to Doge cuts. We have the federal government in shutdown and the administration threatening layoffs that would affect many of our city residents. Medicaid cuts will impact many of our neighbors. Kidnapping our neighbors off the street is most certainly affecting the financial well-being of those families and others too worried to go out even to work. There can be, there can and should be no more business as usual, no more maintenance of effort budgets. Last year alone, the city administration department, the cost rose 6.1% and police costs rose 14.1%. I have spoken before about the consistent annual tax increases that outpace the federal COLA and undermine city residents' ability to live here. I ask that this council closely consider a spreadsheet for my 2024 budget amendments, budget comments that I will forward, that show a five-year annual budget deficit of $5.7 million per year, while the current deficit is $1.6 million after $6.9 million in free ARPA funds. Nothing has changed in the city financially. You have never even gotten close to being a physically sustainable government, even as you have proclaimed it to be so important for the last 10 years or more. The people who live in Tacoma Park need you on their side. Many have little other recourse. Please reduce administrative expenditures, please reduce our tax burden.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
I just want to make sure we don't have any other virtual...
No one knows my line, but I think we forgot one in the...
No, no, we did not forget, we did not forget. I just wanted to make sure we took care of the virtual folks. And then we, I appreciate folks in the room for indulging me as we deal with the virtual commenters, do we have any general public commenters in the room?
We do, and I'm always happy. Arthur David Olson, Board Call, Kirby Hancock, Abbott. First, my annual reminder, people do not pay property tax rates. Property tax... Bills are based on both property tax rate and assessed values. Since assessed values are going up, bills will go up even if the tax rate is held constant. So I hope you will not take credit for a constant property tax rate unless you also take the blame for increased property tax bills. Absent action by the council this year, early next year, the city manager will quite responsibly propose a maintenance of effort budget. That budget will require a rate of increase in property tax bills higher than the rate of inflation, as has been true for the last two years and eight of the last 10 years. Last year, we heard from the mayor regarding tax relief. I'm not saying no, I'm saying not now. Well, to quote Charlie Yardbird Parker, now is the time. What can the council do? I'll start with something that... I'll start with something that doesn't require cuts to staff or programs. Last year's budget included, for the first time, an estimate of staffing cost savings that would result from vacancies. Those savings reduced budgeted expenditures. This year's budget can include an estimate of savings resulting from unexecuted capital projects. To be sure, there's a difference between vacancy savings, which are forever, and capital project savings, where expenses end up being deferred until the project is done in the future. That said, one general principle is that those future expenses are best met by future taxpayers. We ought not ask current taxpayers to pay for projects they aren't enjoying. Now's the time for the council to direct the city manager to add a capital project execution rate item to the budget. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do we have any other general public comments? Okay, we're going to move to council comments this evening. Do we have any council comments? Councilmember Wesley.
Thank you. Good evening, folks. And I'll just say to the folks in the room, if you see a little person in the front, that is my daughter. She is gonna try to let us meet and not be too disruptive, and so far she's doing a very good job. Okay. Oh, I wanted to share that last week I met with Philip Downey at the Moco Pride Center, which was really great to see. So this is a new location, a new permanent in-person location for the Pride Center for LGBTQ+ folks in the county. It is in Bethesda. It was such a great space. It has a library with a lot of exciting inclusive books. It has an open workspace, so if people ever want to go and just co-work in a space, it's there. And it is open every day of the year, 11 to 7, I believe. But every day of the year, I just wanted to highlight. They're already trying to plan and prepare for the holidays coming up, knowing that a lot of LGBTQ folks might not have family to spend the holidays with. So I just wanted to lift that up, that if you are in need and would like to find a way to be in community, that might be a place for you. If you wanted to help in some way to support community for others, I know they will be looking for volunteers for help with that. That, as well as all the other programs they do, is all at mocopridefamily.org. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Wesley. Councilmember Hansett.
Thanks. I have several items. One, I want to wish everybody a happy Indigenous Peoples' Day that's coming up. And I say that also with a lot of really pained emotions about what's happening in our communities right now. I want to acknowledge that we talked about Walk to School Day, that that's not been the same for everybody across our community right now. Every morning, I go out walking my dog, and I see a lot of folks almost running to school in ways I haven't seen before. And I'm also aware, as I've shared with you, and grateful that some of our community members are regularly showing up for their neighbors, and I just want to express gratitude to all those folks who are organizing themselves to keep our neighbors safe, particularly after what happened out in Hyattsville recently and also at Eastern Middle School. It's really scary, I think, every morning going to school in our, in our whole community and definitely over in my side of the, in my side of town. I'm also, last night, I attended a Purple Line CAT meeting for Long Branch. I was pleased to see Roz Grigsby also at the meeting. They told us that the Purple Line is still on the same schedule in which they're predicting passenger service is gonna start in the winter of 2027, so that's pretty exciting. So excited to hear that they're on track. Sligo Creek Parkway is still slated to be, yeah, right now. Sligo Creek Parkway is still slated, they said, to be closed between Wayne and Piney Branch for the two months that was projected from the beginning. So that'll reopen in late November. They gave an exact date, but I don't have it in front of me. Also, last week, I don't think I mentioned, and apologies if this is a repeat, I attended an MDOT meeting over around the Long Branch Station with a number of different stakeholders across our community. They were talking about things like rodent control around some of our Long Branch businesses, and I was pleased that MDOT agreed to work on those issues. They've been really working closely with our businesses on that. They were also showing us some of the Gateway Concepts. So if you haven't had a look at those, you know, you could reach out to MDOT or to some of your, to me. I have some of the copies. Benge's artwork, there's gonna be a very big Lady of Long Branch sculpture that's gonna be going up on Piney Branch that was designed a number of years ago. I must admit, I did not see it in conception, so I've seen it now. And tomorrow's a Purple Line Coalition meeting that I'm not able to attend. It is my birthday. But if anybody else wants to go, I would really encourage folks to think about attending. It's gonna be at the Silver Spring Methodist Church from 6 to 9. And also, on Friday night is a walk-and-talk queer history and ecology event that I saw was advertised at Montgomery Parks, and it's very local, so I thought people might want to know about it. There is a fee of $10, but they're meeting at Sligo Avenue Neighborhood Park, just across from Ward Five. And then finally, because we are in the month in which the deadline is hitting for requesting sidewalks and traffic calming, I'm gonna go ahead and put this out there. I have not talked to staff one-on-one about it. I haven't even talked to my neighborhood about it, but I think everybody knows where I stand on this. I am hereby making a formal request of staff, myself, that I would really love to engage with you on hearing your thoughts on a sidewalk proposal of some sort in Ward Five in response to the fact that I think we haven't seen sidewalks going up in our part of the city for some time. We are grateful for the Flower Avenue Greenway Project, but I would really like to engage in that conversation. I'm not trying to suggest that we absolutely should put one, but I'm not convinced that residents are going to have time or bandwidth to step forward and advocate formally for themselves, and that means a lot of work on me. And so I would be really grateful to the staff for coming out and taking a look. We had the postal worker that I encouraged to come out. I've also spoken to the maintenance staff at Cambridge and Winslow, and they, they believe too that it would be good to have a sidewalk in a particular, a few particular spots where there aren't any, like the postal worker said, on Houston Avenue, around East Ridge and Houston Circle. So any of those places, I think, would be food for thought, and I'd like to hear the staff's thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Hansett. Councilmember DeBala.
Yes, thank you. Just a few things real quickly. The Street Fest was amazing. Thank you to all the city staff who made that happen. I saw the City Sustainability Booth. I picked up the flyer on energy credits that are still available. And so for those of you who are thinking, as I am, about what to do statewide this winter, there is, I'll be having the information in my newsletter, but the City Sustainability Office has all this information about credits at the state and federal level that are still available and the program that the city has for energy grants for lower and moderate-income residents for energy efficiency work in their homes. Secondly, I have gotten a lot of public comment this week, and I really appreciate it. Just so everyone knows, the comments, the topics primarily, speed humps that are scheduled for Lincoln Avenue, and I have asked the Public Works Director, and I'm just saying that tonight so everybody knows, if, if there are technical aspects to exactly where a speed hump is cited. The city council approved these in concept, and we went over all this last spring, but now the paint is on the road, and if there is any wiggle room, by wiggle room I mean a couple of feet one way or the other, so it's not in somebody's, right smack in front of somebody's walkway, et cetera. I've asked the Public Works Director if there is such a thing. So it might not be. It's pretty tight spaces in there. I'm lucky. So that's, that's one topic. Another topic, stop sign cameras. We'll be talking about that later this evening. I've heard lots on both sides of the issue, so not just one thing. And on police vehicles, as you just heard, I've, I've also been receiving comments on why not electric vehicles instead of the hybrids, which is already a big step forward. And so I appreciate that we'll, tonight, we'll be able to talk for a few minutes and hear a few more details about the comparison between EVs and police vehicles. And last but not least, I have, I am, I don't know if the city is planning to update the federal resources page. Okay, because there's lots of new information coming out. Do we, do we know when that might, that update might be available?
Staff has, I've developed a draft. Staff and I are going back and forth with additional resources that are becoming available.
Great. Thank you.
It should be before the end of the week.
Wonderful. That's it for me. Thank you.
Councilmember Landman.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you to Councilmember Hansett for mentioning Walk to School Week. It's a sad day when we have to commemorate Walk to School Week by taking note of the fact that it has become a gauntlet for our students and their families to walk to school. And if there are members of the community who would like to help join with their fellow neighbors to help their friends, their friends and neighbors to walk to school safely in a mutual aid program that their neighbors have been working on, please get in touch with me. I'd be happy to help put you into the mutual aid program if you're interested. I'd like to extend thanks to the Small Things Matter and Giant Food for their really awesome efforts this weekend at the, at the festival, the street fair, to vaccinate people. We vaccinated nearly 600 people on the street there this week. And that is, we can thank the Trump administration for making it so impossible to figure out how vaccinations are working through the normal process that we had such an incredible need for people to get vaccinated. I also wanted to just let constituents know in Ward One about a couple of things. First of all, there was a lot of outpouring of comments from my residents in the neighborhood about the tree removals that are associated with the plans for the Metropolitan Branch Trail Construction Project. And I have reached out to the staff of the city about the possibility of having a walkthrough with the folks who are concerned about that and to try and arrange something so that we can talk about where those removals have been carefully targeted and what the tree replacement plans are for that. And I thank Mr. McNally for agreeing to make arrangements for that. The date is still to be set, and I'll reach out to people in North Tacoma who are particularly concerned so that we can have a chance to see for ourselves specifically what the plans are and make sure that people fully understand what's planned, and we can figure out the best way forward and hopefully build support for carefully finding the best trade-offs between the needs for the budget path and the needs of the community. And secondly, I wanted to focus on the Pepco Power Surge and what that did in the Hodges Heights neighborhood. I've been in touch with the People's Council at the, yeah, Public, the Maryland State People's Council, who advise consumers on their rights when things happen with public utilities. And they have expressed a willingness to meet with the affected consumers. So you'll be hearing from me in the next few days, if you were one of the affected Hodges Heights homes, about what our rights are as consumers when something happens to us and how that dovetails with what the city is doing to protect the city's interests. And, and so stay tuned for an opportunity to meet with the People's Council. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Landman. Councilmember Schlegel.
Thank you, Mayor Cersei, and thanks to all who commented this evening. Looking towards tonight's agenda, I'll first share thoughts on the stop sign camera pilot. I am open to it, of course, but for reasons of safety, not revenue. And that said, I do think we need to plan carefully so that when compliance increases at these stop sign camera locations, we don't quickly reach a situation where the program's fixed costs can't be recuperated through the citation revenue. I've heard from some residents who favor the program. They're frustrated by drivers drifting or flat-out running through stop signs. Yet others worry about citations for trivial infractions, regardless of whether these behaviors endanger anybody. On today, I learned that reviewers will overlook slow-speed rolls through intersections. I hope we can confirm that the threshold set for citations is appropriate for safety and that state law will allow that flexibility in enforcement. Residents do worry this program over time could lead to the city getting reliant on cameras as a revenue source. So the sense of our endangerment and frustration is high, but let's be clear-eyed about our budgetary implications, the legislative requirements, and the community concerns. If we choose to proceed, this experiment will have costs of some kind. Also on the agenda tonight is patrol vehicle purchases. I really appreciate Mr. Wagner and this Gundry's cogent and, to me, persuasive comments. Related to this, as we transition to the hybrid and electric vehicles more and more, it's important to recalibrate our fleet review committee's methodology regularly to identify that true tipping point where the maintenance costs and the declining performance or safety make the vehicle replacement cost-effective. So as design innovations reduce maintenance costs and extend useful lives of vehicles, I feel that our methodology must keep adjusting accordingly. And we should press forward with exploring leasing as an option for reliability of the fleet and also experimentation. And finally, the budget survey is out. Please submit it, residents, colleagues. I read what follows without consulting with Mr. Hubner, Mr. Olson, or having heard from them. With the budget process underway, please consider the merits of calling for the city manager to bring forth three budget scenarios. Perhaps constant tax rate, constant yield plus inflation, and constant yield, or even a reduced yield that could compensate for the eight of the last 10 years increases that Mr. Olson just mentioned. Many municipalities take this approach to strengthen deliberations about options and trade-offs, and often the final budget is better because it incorporates elements from all three scenarios. Presenting three scenarios doesn't require developing three entirely separate budgets. I think this is a sound approach in uncertain economic times for our city and also for so many households. The topics that I've mentioned share the same theme. We need good data to support great decision-making. And so I think let's go for good data in all these areas. It lowers the temperature and helps people find common ground more easily.
Thank you, Councilmember Schlegel. Councilmember Gilbert.
Thank you, man. I want to thank city manager from yesterday in discussion of two topics that, small issues in Ward Four, one of which is, has been some ongoing, which is the parking issue on Hancock Avenue and some signs there that some residents would like to have taken down and some may want to stay, but first steps have been to try to figure out why the signs are there to begin with. And so Director Bratwaite is working with staff to initiate a report that will give us some, some insight on what the impact of those signs will be. So we'll stand by for that report, and then we'll have more discussion for those signs on Hancock. The other topic was the issue of taggings and spray painting on certain, in certain areas within the city and signs and such, and I appreciate the insight I received from city manager Spirito. We, and, and thanks to Adam Lansman from Mississippi Avenue for bringing it to my attention and for all the work he's been doing to remove some of the taggings and stickers and stuff that are just causing the eyesore to parts of our community. So, and thanks to the staff that are gonna be, you know, doing some, some refacing, some of those, those taggings on bus shelters, et cetera, going forward. I have my pink today, still in recognition of Cancer Awareness Month, breast cancer awareness specifically. But shout out to everybody who has family that's battling cancer. I have a sister-in-law who's a cancer survivor, breast cancer survivor. I lost a friend to my circle yesterday to cancer, so everybody get your screenings, please. Take care of yourselves. Got to find out what's going on with your bodies when you, when you have symptoms so that you can have a fighting chance with some of these cancers. But yeah, it's just, my prayers are with all the families out there who have families that are fighting cancer. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Gilbert, and thank you for acknowledging...
Thank you, Councilmember Gilbert, and thank you for acknowledging, um, breast cancer awareness and, and those that are struggling with cancer. Um, also, uh, happy belated birthday to Councilmember Schlegel and happy future birthday to Councilmember Hanzak. Few things, there's a lot of things that were going on this, this weekend. Uh, just want to remind everyone to please not forget about the Crossroads Farmers Market on Wednesdays, um, grapefruits and vegetables, wonderful food. Really want to try to get more people out on Ann Street on Wednesdays. Also want to thank, um, the Tacoma-Langley Crossroads Development Authority or the wonderful Hispanic Heritage Family Block Party that was on, um, Saturday on Holton Lane. I had an opportunity to go out and enjoy some delicious papusas and icy and amazing band. Um, so definitely want to thank the organizers for that. Um, I also want to give a special thank you to, um, Brian Liu, who, um, invited me, um, to attend, uh, concert series, the Anna H Wong, um, concert series, um, some amazing world renowned musicians, um, that they bring in. Um, and the concert was on Saturday at the Tacoma Park, um, Seventh-day Adventist Church. And it was just amazing. I mean, the violinists, they were absolutely amazing. Um, so I want to encourage people to, to check out that series because it, it really is a great opportunity to see some wonderful talent locally. Um, also I want to thank the, um, Old Town Business Association, Laura Barclay, and our staff that supported and all of the volunteers, uh, for the Tacoma Park Street Fest. It was amazing. Um, the weather was perfect, the, the vibes were perfect, the music was great, food is great. Um, and it was just really exciting to have, uh, multiple events in the same weekend in celebration of community. Uh, so I want to thank the organizers that put that together. Um, today I had a chance to attend the Cog, uh, Executive Board Meeting. Um, one of the things that I do want to make my colleagues aware of is there was a presentation, um, from the Capital Area Food Bank, um, highlighting results from their 2025 Hunger Report. Um, and it was very eye-opening to hear that about thirty-five percent of, based on their survey data, about thirty-five percent of, um, residents in Montgomery County are experiencing food insecurity. Um, and so they highlighted a number of the, and that was on the lower end compared to other segments of, of the region. Um, and so it was actually really helpful and sobering to hear, um, about some of the recommendations, um, that the Capital Area Food Bank has, um, for local jurisdictions on things that, that we can all do to try to help address this challenge. Not only supporting and providing financial support to food, um, uh, food providers, um, but also helping to, um, encourage coordination, um, not just with, locally, but also with the Capital Area Food Bank, um, so that they're able to have a better idea of all of the different, um, food providers within the region. Um, and then also thinking about workforce development and providing opportunities for, um, individuals that are impacted by food insecurity to increase their skills and have access to learning opportunities. Um, I will make sure that I share, um, that presentation with the council just so that everybody has it, it's posted online, but I'll send you all the link, um, because it was really, um, useful information for us. Um, as we, uh, were tackling some of the, the major challenges that are facing the region. Uh, tomorrow, um, I will be going to the Federal Workforce Career Center opening, um, in Montgomery County. So, um, I will be attending that tomorrow. Uh, as well as I will be attending, uh, the, uh, Mobilizing Purple Line Communities for Policy Change, um, the community event and celebration. So I will be, um, at the event with the Purple Line Court of Coalition, um, to, uh, talk more about um, ways in which Purple Line communities can, um, uh, partner and think of ways to ensure, um, that, um, the impact of the Purple Line, um, is minimized or negative impacts are minimized, but that also these communities actually get to realize the benefits, um, that a future training, um, that the future Purple Line will provide. Uh, and then other than that, I will be attending MML as well. So there's a lot of stuff, um, that will be going on over the next few days. So with that, I am going to turn things over to our city manager for city manager comments.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, council and the residents and guests this evening. First, the city of Tacoma Park invites you, our residents, to share your ideas and suggestions regarding next year's city budget, which is currently under development. The Tacoma Park Community Budget Survey is one way to share any ideas and innovations that you think the city should consider as part of its upcoming fiscal year budget development. This survey has been prominently advertised and available in the city newsletter, which is delivered to every home. It's on the city website and Has Been and on city social media. The survey should take about ten minutes to complete and we will certainly appreciate your input. The survey will be open until twelve P M. on Wednesday, November twelfth. There's lots of time left. You can, uh, complete the FY twenty-seven Community Budget Survey online at tacopomparkmd.gov. It's going to our website. Also, paper versions are available. Uh, as I mentioned in this month's city newsletter and at drop boxes in the library, at the City Rec Center and the second floor lobby of the Community Center. The paper version is in English and Spanish. And the online version is translated in Spanish, French and Amharic. From the Housing and Community Development Department, the city of Tacoma Park has been awarded a grant through a new program led by Closed Loop Partners Composting Consortium in partnership with Biodegradable Products Institute and U.S. Composting Council. The grant will allow the city to pilot the expansion of its successful residential food waste collection program to include midsize and larger apartment buildings. Over a nine-month period, we will work with property owners and tenants to incorporate food waste collection at up to six sites, six locations across the city. This pilot program is anticipated to have a direct impact on greenhouse gas emissions by eliminating food waste, including, including food contact compostable packaging from landfills and is in alignment with the city's net zero by twenty thirty-five goal. Lessons learned from this pilot will inform strategies to permanently expand the city's food waste collection to include multifamily buildings. From the Police Department, October is Domestic Violence Awareness Month. In partnership with Montgomery County Family Justice Center Foundation, we are collecting essential items for domestic violence shelters to support survivors on their journey to safety and healing. Your contribution can change lives. Let's stand together against domestic violence. Collection runs through Friday, October thirty-first. Donations can be dropped off at Tacoma Park City Building, first floor lobby at seventy, here at seventy-five hundred Maple Avenue. Emergency care packages provide brand-new toiletries and personal care items for each survivor of domestic violence and their children who walk through the doors of the Family Justice Center to receive services. Brand-new stuffed animals, games, toys and books are also provided to every child who goes to the Family Justice Center. Please note that items donated should be new and unopened if possible. For a full list of items needed, please visit the Tacoma Park Police webpage and search Emergency Care Packages. Thank you in advance for your generosity. For victim, uh, for victim witness resources and assistance, please visit the Tacoma Park Police webpage and search Victim slash Witness Assistance. You can also reach out to our Victim Witness Coordinator, Kudelia Savedra at three oh one eight nine one seven one four seven. The Tacoma Park Police Department is participating in the Drug Enforcement Administration's Nationwide Prescription Drug Takeback Day on Saturday, October twenty-fifth from ten A M. to two P M. This campaign allows the public to prevent pill abuse and theft by ridding their homes of potentially dangerous expired, unused and unwanted prescription drugs. Bring your medications to the Tacoma Park Police Department, seventy-five hundred Maple Avenue, first floor lobby or outside weather permitting. For, for, for information, please visit the Tacoma Park Police webpage and search Prescription Drug Takeback Day. From Recreation Department, Monster Bash returns Saturday, October twenty-fifth. Join the City Tacoma Park Recreation Department for our annual Monster Bash, a fun-filled afternoon of costumes, music and community spirit. The schedule is at one P M. that day kickoff is at the Tacoma Park Middle School Parking Lot. At two P M., the costume parade begins on Piney Branch Road and ends on Maple Avenue. After the parade, there is an awards ceremony and live concert by The Grandsons Junior. For more information, including street closures, please visit tacopomparkmd.gov backslash recreation. We can't wait to see your spectacular costumes. In partnership with Montgomery County Recreation and the Recreation Departments of Rockville and the City of Gaithersburg, our city recreation staff will proudly participate in an endorsement ceremony for the project play Children's Bill of Rights and Sports. This inspiring initiative provides a guiding framework for youth sports, promoting positive, inclusive and enriching experiences for all children. The Children's Bill of Rights and Sports serves as a shared vision and aspirational goal for agencies and organizations dedicated to youth development through play. The date is Thursday, um, October ninth, time four P M. And the location is Northwest Branch Recreation Park. We warmly invite city leaders, community members, families and partners to join us for this celebratory event. Let's come together to support the rights of all children to play, grow and thrive through sports. And finally, from the city manager's office, our first half shout-out this week is from our Housing and Community Development Department for, for our community engagement specialist, Mariama Coroma. Mariama put together a well-attended tenant forum that provided useful and timely information to the city's tenants and brought together a number of key resources that are available to residents to assist them with meeting household needs and exercising their rights. Thank you, Mariama. Next, the shout-out is for Lieutenant Mark Elfato, who has been chosen to represent us at Maryland's Law Enforcement Torch Run Program at the twenty twenty-five International Event in Minneapolis, Minnesota. Lieutenant Elfato was nominated by the Montgomery County Region and selected to be an honored guest. Lieutenant Elfato expressed that he was truly passionate about the relationship Tacoma Park Police has with all members of the community so that inclusion can be experienced at all level. He has been actively participating in Special Olympics events year-round to show support and encouragement for athletes. And he continues to strive for further police efforts in raising awareness and funds for this cause. And finally, thank you, uh, to all of those library public works and police employees who worked last Sunday's Street Festival. We appreciate the commitment to serve the community this way on a weekend. As an aside, my wife, Vanda Lina, and I attended this festival. We really enjoyed it. As Madam Mayor said, it was an amazing event. And that concludes my report, thank you.
Thank you very much, uh, Councilmember Schlegel, do you have a follow-up question?
I just had a follow-up question, thank you, City Manager, for the update. Um, with the paper budget, community budget survey, there, there were some questions a few days ago about where to turn it in. Do you have, um, the locations?
Yes, it's actually printed on the survey itself.
Okay.
And the locations are listed as the, uh, Community Center. And they're located, and there's a drop box, um, matter of fact, right out around the corner here, uh, on a table with extra copies of the blank, uh, surveys. That's one of the three drop boxes. Uh, another one is in the library. And the third one is at the Community Recreation Center on New Hampshire Avenue. Uh, those are for the paper versions, uh, online, of course, folks can respond online. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Okay, we're going to move to our voting session this evening. The first item is the Second Reading Ordinance approving the FY twenty-six Budget Amendment Number Two. Um, would someone like to move it?
So moved.
Thank you, Councilmember DeBala for moving, thank you, Councilmember Gilbert for seconding. Just want to quickly confirm with staff that there are no additional, uh, points of discussions or changes since this item was before us last.
No.
Wonderful, given that this is an ordinance with the clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Landman?
Aye.
Councilmember DeBala?
Yes.
Yes.
Aye.
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 Hey, the next item is the Single Reading Ordinance approving the purchase of police vehicles. And, um, given the number of questions that has come up through public comments and council comments, um, I would appreciate it if, uh, our, uh, Chief DeVal would, um, provide just a little bit more context in terms of the work that was done to review, um, the availability of a E V, um, E V vehicle, some of the concerns that were raised in, in terms of your review, the cost differential, just a little bit more background in terms of your overall review. And I know it's not just you, I see Director Bratway back there too, um, in terms of the Chevy trip, Chevy Blazer, um, E V. Let me make sure your mic is on. There you go.
All righty, uh, thank you, Madam Mayor, I appreciate that. Uh, just to be clear, what we're talking about is our patrol fleet. Uh, we do have electric vehicles in our non-p patrol fleet already, so I want to make sure that the public knows that we do have electric vehicles in our fleet. Um, just to give you some background, and it was, this was added to the cover letter. Um, the Vehicle Replacement Committee evaluated the purchase of electric vehicles while we were about, during the evaluation of this year's purchase cycle. Uh, the Chevy Blazer specifically was reviewed. Uh, just to give you a base cost, so you have an understanding of where the cost is, the Chevy Blazer per unit, per vehicle costs about sixteen thousand dollars more than the vehicle that we purchased, uh, the Ford Hybrid vehicle. Uh, staff, the committee, um, and Daryl is here, she can speak to this. I do not feel comfortable, uh, with the current charging capabilities, um, of the Chevy Blazer, uh, moving forward with it at this time. Um, other jurisdictions have moved forward with other various electric vehicles, the Mach-E that had, did not turn out very well. Uh, we tried out, uh, the, uh, Nissan Rogue that didn't work well for us. The Chevy Blazer is the first pursuit-rated vehicle. So, uh, the recommendation of the Vehicle Replacement Fleet, um, as well as, um, the current capabilities of our charging capabilities within the city, as well as the capabilities of this particular vehicle, we thought it was best to wait a year, uh, to evaluate, um, other jurisdictions who are doing testing and evaluating on the vehicle. Uh, for example, Montgomery County is testing and evaluating the Chevy Blazer S U V, and Heitzville has one as well. Um, it has always been our goal, and I've been very clear, as soon as the hybrids came available, we transitioned to the hybrids. They work for us. As soon as we can find a vehicle and the charging infrastructure, and it doesn't just involve the charging infrastructure here in the city building or the city facilities, it also involves charging infrastructure, um, at the potential officer's home. So, uh, for all those reasons, we just, that, that did not feel at this point, um, that, that, the, the vehicle met our needs, both from an operational standpoint as well as having the charging infrastructure in place to be able to utilize them effectively as a patrol vehicle.
Thank you. And so we heard earlier that there was, uh, a, a, a question as to why we would not pilot, um, the product as well. And you mentioned that there are other jurisdictions nearby, but they're not far, that are actually using these vehicles. What mechanisms do we have in place to learn from what their, what their expenses are with the, with the, um, particularly the, the Blazer?
Absolutely, it's a great question. So, so I, I spoke today with, uh, Chief Towers from Heitzville to see if they had any, uh, documented data that would be helpful for this session. Um, so as soon as their data is available on the Chevy Blazer, they will forward it to us. They're probably the most similar apples-to-apples comparison of a jurisdiction for us. They also factor in the same, um, need for their take home. They also factor in the same, um, need for their take-home cars and so on and so forth. We also spoke with Assistant Chief Darren Frank from Montgomery County Police about their test and evaluation of the Mach-E, uh, which is not a pursuit-rated vehicle. That did not go well for them. So, our, our goal is as soon as they have their information on their pilot program, before we go back and purchase next year's vehicles, we're able to have that information. So when we meet as a Vehicle Replacement Committee, we can evaluate and say, okay, well, Hyattsville was able to do this. These were some of the issues. Or, um, you know, Montgomery County had these issues. So as we're moving forward, we don't make the mistakes that they possibly made, or we're able to take from their program and develop ours. So that, that's the goal from, uh, instead of us piloting it when others are doing it, it makes more sense to, to have them do that at that point.
Right. Thank you. And I, I see Director Braithwaite back there. Um, and I know that we just recently approved to move forward with the installation of, um, additional EV chargers. Uh, and I don't know, Chief, if this is your lane or Director Braithwaite's. Um, in terms of capacity, it was my understanding that we were, for lack of better words, playing catch-up in terms of these new, um, charging stations, um, in terms of being able to meet current demand. Um, is there, with that increased capacity for us, if we were to purchase an additional EV, um, with the installation of the, the chargers that is being planned, um, to go in? I'm just trying to, in my mind, you, you build, make sure you have the charging stations before you buy the car. Um, but I just want to make sure that I'm clear in terms of, you know, the capacity that we're adding and whether or not, um, there was any extra room for an EV, um, pursuit rate, rated police vehicle at this time.
Uh, that's a really good question, and, and I probably can add to, into the operational standpoint of that. So currently, uh, the EV vehicles that the police department has, that code enforcement has, and the city has, uh, we're utilizing public charging stations. So this is at least going to give us an opportunity to have our own set-alone charging station for the existing vehicles that we currently have. So it will not only give us more opportunity to charge for those vehicles, which at times it's challenging to even get charging for those vehicles, and it will also free up charging for the public, so we're not utilizing the public chargers. So basically, what it's, what it's doing is helping us catch up just for the existing electric vehicles that we currently have. Um, and that doesn't even address the, the charging capacity as far as length of time to charge a vehicle for, for a patrol vehicle and what the charge would hold and so on and so forth.
Thank you so much. Um, Councilmember Landman?
I'd like to understand better when you say you are uncomfortable with the, with the charging capabilities. Is it that you're uncomfortable with the fact that we don't have the chargers on site now? Or uncomfortable with the rate at which they charge? Or how long they hold a charge? Or uncomfortable with the fact that we don't have charging capacity at the households of the officers that would, um, be the ones taking the vehicles home? Because uncomfortable could like mean any or all of the above, so.
All of the above.
So are, is the timing issue a key factor? Because I mean, the timing of when our chargers are going to be installed is a, I don't know, when the cars are arriving, when the chargers are arriving. Maybe one of you could clarify the timing issue for us as far as the vehicles and the new chargers.
Even, just, just as I said earlier, even if the new chargers were in place, it still would not give us enough capacity to make us feel comfortable that, number one, the vehicle would hold a charge. Number one, that we would have enough availability for all the electric vehicles we currently have for our city infrastructure. And it wouldn't address the, 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 the possibility or the probability that we need to install a charging unit at the individual officer's, um, residence. So all, all, all of the above. So even if the, even if the, uh, they were installed today, it still wouldn't have changed the decision because it still would have, all three things that you mentioned would have been impacted.
Okay, pardon my ignorance on this, but how long does, uh, one of those vehicles, either the Blaze, I guess, Blazer, how long does it take to charge the vehicle, assuming it's starting from, you know, let's say 20% when it arrives, uh, to, to the 80% that it normally charges to before it heads out to begin its day of work? Do you have any?
Uh, maybe this Director Braithwaite, that depends on the, the capacity of the charger. Um, but, but our concern, our concern is how often it needs to be charged.
Well, both. I mean, yeah.
Yeah, so it depends on the charger. I, I can't speak to certain chargers and how much faster they are than others. But our concern is, uh, you know, the, the capacity to hold a charge, how often the officers would have to come in and actually charge. Um, I think, uh, Mayor Cersei and I were talking about this earlier, and she gave the analogy of her computer. And her computer can last a long, a long, much longer on a battery if she doesn't plug in, uh, her phone to charge and other accessories. So we're adding all of these accessories to a vehicle. So a patrol vehicle is not just your normal vehicle. Just, just, it has a, a mobile dada terminal that charges. It has light that charges. It has a radio that charges. It has a printer for, uh, for tickets. So there's a multitude of things that are actually drawing off the battery as well. So that's why we want to get the data from Hyattsville to say, okay, well, we feel comfortable that for a six-hour period, this vehicle will hold a charge. Then we can say, okay, well, if that's, if that's where we, that's where they are, we need to understand the charging infrastructure that we will need to accommodate a vehicle that will hold a charge for six hours. I'm just throwing that number up.
I understand. Uh, well, presumably, the other police departments that already do have these vehicles also have all of the other equipment, uh, installed in them. And so there might be data out there with respect to all of these issues from the other departments. I'm just, I, 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 we're not starting from a position where we would be the very first people in the country. So there may be data that we could be drawing from. I, you know, I, I'm not trying to press this to have us, you know, experiment and have our police cars stopped in the middle of the street. I'm just wondering, you know, whether we, um, you know, whether when they, uh, have a pursuit-rated police vehicle, there could be more battery power in a police's pursuit-rated vehicle than in a standard Chevy Blazer to account for those additional draws on the battery, for all I know. So I was just wondering whether we had information on that. I guess, I guess we don't have information, but it doesn't seem like it would be impossible to imagine that, that somebody existed on that.
Well, I just want to just go back because I asked that question earlier, which was, can we take some of the lessons learned from Hyattsville and apply? And we were told, the chief just said, yes.
I was wondering about, you know, if there are other police departments, as, as Mr. Wagner said, other police departments that already have had experience. And if Hyattsville is getting it now, that's great. And if other police departments slightly further afield already have information we could learn from, then I just wondered if we might have access to that.
Yeah, just, just for background, the Chevy Blazer SUV is a newer vehicle. There have been electric vehicles, um, out and about that have been used as police vehicles. Uh, we have the Mach-E, the Tesla. The Chevy Blazer SUV pursuit-rated package is a fairly new, uh, uh, new product. So there isn't as much information as there would be on the Mach-E or the Tesla. And that's why we're, we're trying to get the, the, uh, relative information so we can make educated decisions next year around when we go to purchase.
Uh, Councilmember DeBala?
Yeah, thank you for, um, doing a little more digging on this. Um, I wanted to go to a couple of things that you brought up just now and, and get a little deeper if you don't mind. Um, I thought I heard you say last week that, that Chevy Blazer's been available on the market now for two years. So.
I, I, it hasn't been readily available to, so understand, when they, when they make a new model of vehicle, that doesn't mean that you can immediately purchase it.
Yeah.
You have to order it, and then there's a delay in which you receive it.
So the, the amount of time that other communities might already have one is, is a year?
I, I'm, I'm not 100% sure. It depends on when they acquired it, um, and when that information came back. Um, like I said, it's, uh, just, so when a vehicle becomes readily available, for example, when we order these vehicles, we may not get these vehicles for six months to eight months. We have to put an order in, they have to make it, and there's, there's a delay in, in getting those vehicles. So even though it may have been available 18 months ago, that doesn't mean it's actually been on the road and available for, for, for departments to, to utilize uh, for that entire duration of time. If that makes sense.
Yeah. Um, whether we, uh, approve this or not tonight, I would very much like to have the Fleet Committee look into the, not just the Hyattsville, but the communities that, um, the Sustainable Maryland Committee members have identified as already having them that are in other states. See whether there's data available. And when you say data, you mean, I think, the battery lifetime in actual service? So it seems to me that there ought to be already information available about whether the battery is rated to last longer because it's at least, what do they advertise? So that would be another thing we should, we should know.
I, do you want to mention there are variables on how these vehicles are being utilized as well?
I, I appreciate that.
There's, there's, there're departments that may have the vehicle, but they're not being utilized in patrol capacities. So may, they may not be an apples-to-apples comparison about how that works. So for example, our electric, yeah, so, but absolutely, that, our whole purpose in this, and, and understand, I want to be crystal clear, as I've said, since we've been talking about electric vehicles and before we got hybrid vehicles, we absolutely want to transition to electric vehicles. We're not at all opposed to that. But we just want to make sure that we're putting our officers in a situation where, number one, they have a vehicle that can, that they can use for their entire shift. Uh, number two, that we're providing services to the, to our residents, that we're not spending two hours of downtime every shift to charge a vehicle, and, and that's really important. And we just want to make sure that we are, are putting everything in place. And, and I want to be clear, this isn't just the police department. This, the, the, you know, the, the city in general is, is moving towards an electric fleet as well. So when we talk as a Fleet, uh, Replacement Committee, it's not just police vehicles. It's also public works vehicles and so on and so.
Right, and that was actually my next question. Is, I understand later tonight, we'll be talking about public works, uh, pickup trucks. And so at some point, it would be helpful to hear from the Public Works Director about the different vehicles that may come online sooner rather than later and how they are going to be used with the new chargers. And if there is any existing extra capacity based on scheduling to fit in one EV from the police department or not, I'm still a little unclear on that. Um, but before we get to that, just, um, to the question about charging policy at residents' homes. So we have asked as a council a couple of times about this. I would like to hear a status on where we are with developing that particular policy for how that gets charged, how the charging would work at home, how much it would cost, et cetera. We have the Fleet Report that came out last spring from Pepco, and it gave an estimate, a kind of a theoretical estimate of what it would cost to do it at a, at a, an officer's home, and then it gave a couple of alternatives, um, that could maybe bring the cost down. So we were, I understood that we were going to look at developing a policy specific to our community on and to our police department on that. So that was last spring, and so where we are now is where are we now?
Well, we, we've not developed a policy. A lot of that policy would be dependent on how long the vehicle can hold a charge, whether or not we actually need a charging station at the officer's residence. We're not 100% sure of that. Whether or not it would be, we'd be better off to provide a, a stipend for the officer to charge at a charging station near their residence or so on and so forth. We're still trying to figure that out as we figure out, move, we're gravitating towards electric vehicles. So we, we don't currently have, um, a, a policy in place that says we, we will, like, like our take-home policy says, if we don't provide you a vehicle, we will provide you a stipend. We don't have that as of yet. Uh, that's a work in progress, and we will work through that as we try to figure out exactly, uh, you know, how we're going to gravitate. How long is the vehicle going to hold a charge? If it can hold a charge and we can transition so they can, the officer can get home and, and not need a charge, then we may not need that. So we're still evaluating all that. We're not at the point where we have a policy that says A, B, C, or D. It's just, it's still a work in progress.
So, so understanding that all we have now is what the company claims, um, and a couple of communities that we could reach out to to see if there's apples or whether they're come once. But I would very much, very much like, uh, to see the information we could have. What is the battery rating for the patrol, pursuit-rated Chevy versus your regular EV from Ford, uh, Chevy? Um, uh, what is the experience of the communities? Let me rephrase that. Are the communities that have these already outside of, outside of our immediate area, are they comparable? Um, and I would like to, to see a, um, two more things, and, and then we'll let Director, uh, Director Braithwaite talk about the charging.
I just want to.
I want two more things to mention that I would like.
Really quickly, so I'm trying to gauge how much time we need for this, Councilmember DeBala, so.
So I'm trying to finish, yes.
Yeah. Um, so the. Four minutes.
Yeah. Um, no. Uh, uh, a bit more specifics on how you will approach the residential charging policy and when. Um, kind of interim steps. I'd like to know when they are and what they are. Um, and, uh, the last thing we were just talking about, uh, hearing about the capacity, the charging of the, the, the EV chargers that we are going to put in, there was a fairly specific plan for how much they can charge and where, when they can charge and how many vehicles. So I'd like to just have us be refreshed upon that. Um, but I have this info, information request for the, um, City Manager and, uh, Fleet Committee.
Okay. Um, so I just want to, uh, make sure, Councilmember DeBala, like, are you asking for them to provide, um, a response now to your request? Or is that something they can provide you in writing after the call, um, after doing some?
Well, yeah, it's not possible to do it right now, obviously.
So you've already provided that to the City Manager in writing?
No, but I just worked out that I'm going to do that.
Okay. All right, great. Um, Councilmember Schlegel?
Uh, thank you, and thank you for the further information, Chief DeVal. Um, you mentioned, so I just have a quick questions. First, you mentioned that we're using public charging stations right now for some city fleet vehicles. Is that system working adequately from a standpoint of city service provision? While it's not ideal, is it working adequately?
Uh, the reason we had to use those charging stations is because we didn't have adequate city charging stations. I'm not, uh, perfectly understanding the question. But the reason that we had to use those charging stations is because we did not have adequate city charging stations. I'm not, I'm not, maybe I'm missing what you're asking.
I guess that, that implies that we did purchase EVs knowing we would need to use those, those, uh, public charging stations. Is that correct?
I, I would assume. I mean, we've had the, we've had EVs for quite some time as far as in the police department. We've had them for parking enforcement and, uh, and other capacities.
Okay. And then you, um, you said you had a conversation with Hyattsville. Um, I, I had two questions that you might have gleaned from that conversation. First, how long have they been using the Chevy Blazer pursuit-rated vehicle now?
They just recently purchased it and recently got it outfitted. I'm not sure the exact duration of time that it's actually, has actually been in service.
So they didn't mention, like, whether.
No, I spoke briefly with Chief Towers. It was more to try to get information for the, a request from another council member about costs.
Okay. And regarding, you said they have take-home policies. So how long did it take them to install the chargers at officers' homes? Like, I'm wondering whether there's a, a big time delay on that or whether.
I don't think they have, I don't think they have that apparatus in place yet. I do not believe that they have a charging station set. And it's, it's one vehicle, so I don't believe they have a charging station. It's my understanding they do not have a charging station at the officer's home.
Okay. Um, and last quick question was, so, you know, as an, as an EV owner, it seems like that heat and air conditioning can dramatically increase the drawdown on the battery, um, even when you're sitting and, you know, so to speak, idling. Um, and I know that police officers, while doing reports and things, often need to have everything on and running, and it can be a cold day or a hot day. What would be the, the drawback to renting a Blazer, recognizing that it wouldn't have all the onboard equipment, but just putting it through the paces for a couple of months to see how the charge holds up?
Hey, I'm, I'm, there, there is so much involved in outfitting a police vehicle. So, so I'm, if I'm hearing you correctly, you're saying rent a vehicle without all the police equipment on and put it through the motions with what a police officer would do on it?
Yeah.
I, uh, to be, to be blunt, I, I don't understand how the data gathered from that would help us at all because there's so many, uh, ancillary things that go into what it is for a, 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 um, a, a, a police vehicle, uh, with its lights, with its, uh, MDT. And, and I'm not quite sure who would drive that vehicle. Um, it would be a waste of personnel to try to replicate patrol services if we couldn't use it in a patrol capacity. It did, I'm, I'm not sure how that would be done to be, to begin.
Thank you. I mean, one suggestion would be you could use it for a non-p patrol capacity, but make sure it was on the whole time with the, when it was parked, with the air conditioning going and the heat or whatever.
With, with all due respect, that's not remotely right.
It's, okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Schlegel. Uh, Deputy City Manager, Uvanks, I see you're late.
Thank you, Mayor. I was just going to remind council, and I believe that, um, Director Braithwaite spoke to this last week. There is a real likelihood that the. There is a real likelihood that the two public charges that we currently use for um to charge city the city fleet are going to be removed due to the challenges that we have with the existing provider. So it's not as if we are adding capacity with the addition of the new charges. We're replacing the capacity.
Thank you, Deputy City Manager Uvanks, Councilmember Wesselak.
Thank you. Um, I'll keep this brief because it's already been touched on. Um, but I just to the extent that it can be, I just really want to encourage that we get as much in place on the whole take home policy and how that might work because it seems like there's a lot of variables with that. And I would hate for us to get to a point where we might be ready on all other fronts, but then having to kind of build out such a thing. So um I know there's stuff that we won't know until say, a particular car is purchased, but as much as we can in advance, I just I hope that we can do that so we can have that component as ready as can be.
I I appreciate that. I mean, there there are many variables, homeownership, apartment ownership, condo association capabilities of a of a electrical panel, but I I appreciate that. We will absolutely. I I don't anticipate that that our policy would ever hold up as transitioning to electric vehicles. We would kind of go on the fly like Hyatt's bill. I don't think has a take home, but I don't think it would ever impact, would never impede us from transitioning. That would not be an impeding. But I understand what you I understand what you're saying about having a policy.
But but I you have said numerous times that the the fact that we don't know what we would do about officer take home vehicles and how that would be charging is a reason to not move on it right now, but I feel like you just said the opposite.
In 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 large scale, yes, in large scale, yes. So um what what we did when we had a a vehicle that was a non patrol vehicle. We did not set up a charging station. So we evaluated how long it would charge and so on and so forth. So if we were to say next year and we're comfortable moving forward and we got two of these vehicles. Uh, we'd have to be very selective on who we assign them to. It would have to be somebody that had a a homeownership, that had a a panel that had the capacity and so on and so forth. So i- it's it's complicated because it's it's contractual as well. Take homes are our our contractual agreement with local four hundred. Um, so I maybe I'm not being clear, but but I I I don't. What I'm saying is is I when 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 we are fully willing and able to move forward, if we didn't have a comprehensive policy, that wouldn't impede us if we were comfortable moving forward with the vehicle and purchasing it, if that may be.
Alright, thank you. Uh, council member Hansak.
Briefly, because we're going to vote on this, I just want to just want to say to my colleagues, I fully appreciate that we have a very aggressive um climate policy and I appreciate that the public is very keen to move as quickly as possible. But what I am hearing is pragmatism, pragmatism. Um, and if if nothing else matters, I think it's extremely critical that our patrol vehicles are ready to go operational and that our officers are fully equipped and ready to do what they need. And I think it's very wise, frankly, to give it at least one year for a brand new vehicle. Um, I know that that has been a house. Uh, this may be a values difference. I don't think it's wise right now for our city to take that kind of risk in our police force um for a patrol vehicle that is so critical to our basic functioning and public safety, particularly right now. So I'm just sharing it um, sharing my thoughts on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Hansak, uh, Councilmember Landman.
Um, one quick point, and then I wanted to potentially suggest revised language for the resolution, if I may. And I um just wanted to flag that um you had mentioned the higher purchase price of the vehicle of sixteen thousand dollars. Higher initial purchase price, and I'm very sensitive to that point. I appreciate your pointing that out. And I just had the question that the lifecycle cost is of interest as well. And that we've heard repeatedly that oh that maintenance costs for electric vehicles are significantly lower over the the length of the vehicle's ownership. And wondered whether you know what the price different the maintenance cost differential would normally be over the life of that vehicle. That's something that um that um John Braithwaite has talked about and whether that sixteen thousand dollar initial price is likely to be made up over the lifecycle of an E V versus a standard um for a hybrid, which has got both the electric and the um combustion engine in it and and whether that is something we should think about when considering the overall cost of acquiring a vehicle. Um, so um uh perhaps I'll ask you to answer that and then I'll offer, if I may, the suggested revised language.
Councilmember, we we don't have that information currently, but um we understand that there's a data request from council and we can add that. So if we can find the information, we'll provide it.
And and to that point, I mean, I I just uh and I appreciate Councilmember Hansak's um point of the importance of pragmatism. I understand um that our our residents are encouraging us to move forward um eh faster. Um, but I will say I feel like we do this every single time there is a discussion about a vehicle purchase and it frustrates me. Um, it frustrates me a lot because we never budget extra money into the E R R. So when these types of things occur, we have the money already allocated in our budget to pay for it. Now, I know that we have newer council members, but I'll walk you through it. I got a lot of examples of where staff will come to us. Members of council will say, hey, is there an E V version? Staff will present the E V version. Say, hey, you know what? Do you think this might be a little too expensive for us right now? So we're going to go with the other. And we say as a council, oh, no, it's more important. Let's spend that extra two hundred thousand dollars. Let's spend that one fifty. Let's spend that extra sixteen K. Let's spend that extra. And then when it's time to talk about the budget, it is let's cut, let's cut, let's cut. Why do we need two cars? Let's do. When the reality is we should be forward thinking. If this is a goal that we have as a community to increase our capacity to electrify our fleet, that means we need to be budgeting for additional charging infrastructure. We need to make sure that is a priority when we're talking. We're we there were lots of discussions now about cutting the budget and showing different options for keeping it at constant yield and all of that. But right now, what we're talking about is money. And that means we would need to make sure that we are allocating resources to increase our charging capacity. That means we need to make sure that we're planning ahead for additional resources necessary to electrify our fleet. Instead of doing this every single time, staff come to us with the money that we've budgeted and present options and we say, no, we want you to spend more money. So I'm going to step off of my soapbox because we we've it's not it's not this council. The last council and the council before that and the council before that. That is what we do. And I really want to encourage all of us to be more forward thinking in terms of how we will actually budget and save for the type of infrastructure that we want to have in the city. And it's not just limited to the incremental increases of the cost of the vehicles. It also includes how much money we need to budget to provide the additional support to our staff who may need to take these vehicles home. It includes the charging infrastructure and any in any maintenance upgrades or training that our staff need in order to maintain these vehicles. Because we're going to have another conversation. I'm pretty sure we're going to have uh we're we're what's work session number procurement of two public works vehicles. And I promise you, we're going to have the same type of conversation. So I just want to encourage all of us as we are getting ready to have also budget conversations to keep these types of discussions in mind. Because if this is really something that we want to make sure we are moving forward as a community, we need to make sure that we are prioritizing it when we are having conversations about the budget. Uh, council member to ballin.
To to that end, um, the thing that I forgot uh to say was that when we get to budget priorities, I'm going to be proposing that we put this in our budget priorities. I did think last year that it was gonna that the staff would have been planning for that. Um, and in some departments they did, and in some departments they looked at hybrids or or whatever else they felt was more practical. Um, but I what she said, budget priorities. Just letting you all know and we'll be doing that.
Councilmember Schlegel.
Um, I just wanted to clarify that you were saying there were a lot of discussions about presenting multiple versions of a budget. I was the only one who brought that up. And uh, I want to make clear it's possible to prioritize one thing and budget for it and be forward thinking, as you're saying. And I think that's important. And then you can also de-prioritize other things in order to achieve the budget you want.
I I totally agree, but what I what I have seen in practice is when it's budget season, it's about the cuts. When we are faced with decisions and options, it's about what it is that we want or what our community demands. And I'm just asking for us to remember this conversation when we are having discussions about budget priorities and the budget. That's all I'm asking. Alright, any other points? Okay, so just as a reminder for everyone, this is a single reading ordinance. Councilmember Landman, you said you had a proposed amendment. But we have not moved this, so we're going to move this first. Did we move this? I don't think we did. So we're going to move this first. Um, and then we will discuss amendments. Um, would someone like to move the single reading ordinance authorizing the purchase of three hybrid police patrol S U Vs?
I have a point. I have a point of order before we make that motion, if I may. It are is what is being moved, the ordinance as it was revised?
Correct. Well, what what is being moved is the ordinance as it was a as it was a revised, the markup that we have here.
Marked up, right. Thank you.
Just as a reminder for everybody, there were uh two whereas's that were added as a result of the conversation that was had. Someone was saying it was revised. It was based on those two whereas's. Okay, so I just want to confirm, Councilmember Gilbert, you moved? Okay, do I have a second? Thank you, Councilmember Wesselak. So Councilmember Gilbert moved. Councilmember Wesselak seconded. Okay, um, and so are there any amendments or points of discussion? Councilmember, Councilmember Landman.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. So the amendment are the revisions to the initial ordinance uh were offered by myself at the previous meeting and uh based upon the discussion. And and they were initially intended to draw attention to the fact that we very much did want to have uh electric vehicles purchased, but that uh on the advice of of the um the committee that was considering the the feasibility, that um the the vehicle purchasing, I forget the name of it, you know who I'm talking about. The purchasing advisory group that we were not yet. It was determined that we're not yet ready to go there, but we should add language clarifying that we had carefully considered the option and and felt that we couldn't go there yet. So based on the conversation we're having today and with some advice from my colleague here, um, Councilmember DeBola, I want to suggest revisions to the second whereas that are on the draft that we're looking at. And I will just read the clause and the proposed provisions into the clause to read it uh as follows. Whereas hybrid vehicles are the preferred choice because electric pursuit rated patrol vehicles with adequate charging length are currently not available to meet the city's needs.
Second.
Um, can you just repeat um pursuit rated patrol vehicles? What about the charging? Can you repeat that phrasing?
Yes, okay. Whereas hybrid vehicles are the preferred choice because electric pursuit rated patrol vehicles with adequate charging length are currently not available to meet the city's needs. Or I could say to meet the city's needs are currently not available. That would be clearer, wouldn't it? I'm asking our resident for marrying. That's you.
I'm just trying to change as little as what's on the paper.
So that's what I was doing.
How it is, yeah, so.
I I had initially thought that with adequate charging capability uh and uh Councilmember DeBola thought adequate charging length was was clearer, but I would I I'm open to feedback on that. I think the key thing is to clarify that it's the ability to either hold or or um have available adequate charge for the course of a patrol period is what we're trying to convey, but anyway.
Uh, council member.
Chief, does that language, it strikes me as overspecific to the array of issues that is keeping us from making this purchase. And therefore I am not comfortable. Do you agree or do you have another? Do you have a suggestion?
I I I was trying to track what the language was and I don't have the actual ordinance in front of me, so I can't see the whereas clauses, so it's hard to track. Both the city manager and I, based on what we were hearing, were thinking the same thing. Um, and and if you could just direct me to which whereas clause they were adding it to, that would be helpful.
It is the one, two, three, four, five, six, yeah, the the next to last. The sixth whereas um that was added and underlined.
I I I I think the whereas as written uh properly defines where we are. I think way too narrow in scope to try to uh describe it the way it was described. Um, and and I don't know if you want to restate it, uh, which you said, whereas clause, but I I would I would think the whereas clause as is uh would suffice.
May I respond? So um colleagues, the reason I asked for that clarification is it is my impression that we're not just talking about adequate charging capacity. And I think the way the whereas clause is currently written, it's using the word suitable and um to cover the array of different issues that the department is considering and that we are considering as a council. Um, from charging capacity to unknown sort of charging retention to charging stations to um the lack of having tested this particular vehicle and all of its different nuances and um I I think we're looking for not having a first line vehicle partially is what I'm hearing. I mean, there are are multiple issues at hand. And I think that if we were to add that language that you're proposing, while I understand why you might want to do that. Um, it it almost screams to the community just challenge me on that one and then somebody's going to go out and try to find that number and tell you that we're wrong. And then we'd say, actually, that wasn't the only thing we were considering. So and I and I don't think it is the only thing that we're considering, at least it's not the only thing I'm considering as I make this decision. And that's not what I'm here, the chief saying either. So I hate to put them in that uh difficult position.
Uh, may I make a quick suggestion to revise that amendment? I I I'm moved. I I'm persuaded by some of this. I I do think that we have, we've determined that we can have electric vehicles for command uh use, but perhaps not for patrol use. So let me um offer to withdraw the amendment as I originally worded it and substitute the word patrol for the word police and leave it at that because it seems like all of the objections that we've heard to the use of E Vs apply to patrol vehicles, but not to the use of these vehicles in command um other than in the patrol capacity. Would people be comfortable with that?
But council member, can I just say pursuit rated? Pursuit rated, pursuit rated in the current whereas implies patrol.
So so would you like to keep the amendment on the floor or would you like to withdraw it?
Uh, I think I'll withdraw it.
Alright, um, are there any other points of discussion before we have the clerk call the vote?
Uh, I've been in this trap before where I want to discuss something and in order to do it, I have to move in. So uh I am moving, I am proposing this for the purpose only of discussing whether this is a good idea. That makes sense. Well, no one else has heard this idea yet, so I don't I don't think I don't think I don't know whether this is going a good idea or not. Um, I would like to propose that we change the three to two for the purposes of today and hold off on one of the vehicles for two weeks till we get the information that was requested. And the information that we requested is that I And the information that we requested is, that I requested, is clearly not complete information about the suitability of the Chevy Blazer in Hyattsville and Long Island County, because they've only had them for a little bit. But if there is information about other communities that have had it for as much as a year that are similar, because we don't know, and if we know that the company claimed, which we don't know either, is that the battery issues are addressed, at least in part, because the battery um, rating for a pursuit vehicle is higher than the battery rating for a residential vehicle, right? We don't know that either, so within a week or two, we should know both of those things, and they may inform whether, whether councilmembers wish to go through with purchasing a third hybrid or switch to a EV.
That, that does, if I can just comment, that doesn't address all the variables that are in place. We still have the charging infrastructure challenges. There are multiple, as it, as it says, there are multiple different layers of issues that we're encountering. I can't envision any data that we're gonna receive that's gonna change the opinion of the Vehicle Replacement Committee based on currently where we are. I, I just, even if, even if we found some outline agency somewhere that has six months of data that says that the battery holds a longer charge, it still doesn't change the fact that we don't have sufficient charging infrastructure in place, and we're not going to have that available, especially with the possibility of losing the public charging mechanism. So I, I just don't see that any data that we're gonna receive two weeks from now is gonna change uh, our opinion in any way. Because when we, when we reviewed this, we, we looked at other variables like that.
Well, did you hear what other councilmembers?
So, so one question I have is, so we, we started out meeting five, right? Um, the staff cut back the vehicles to three?
Three.
Um, with two being planned for um, acquisition for next year. To what extent could the um, to what extent could the committee um, provide us with um, information regarding the, the real possibility of next year um, having a um, uh, having an EV or purchasing EVs for the um, for the next um, purchase for next year, for the next two that we've delayed?
I, I mean, I, I feel pretty confident um, that as we move forward, and if we have sufficient uh, information and background, that we'll be able to at least move forward with one, but we absolutely can huddle with, with the committee and see where we are. I mean, we had some really robust discussions on whether or not we would move forward this year, with not only whether or not it was five, but what those three would look like. So ab- absolutely, um, I, I, the, the goal is not to wait and to move forward as soon as we possibly can. Um, and, and, and I, I think next year, um, we have a mixture, it's just unique this year because we have only patrol vehicles. We don't have any uh, non-patrol vehicles, so if that were the case, we'd be bringing form, forward some electric vehicles that we will be uh, bringing forward for non-patrol vehicles. So absolutely, I think we can huddle again, but I think the thought, at least from the committee, was next year is when we would be able to move forward, whether or not it's one or two or what have you, but that was kind of the consensus of the committee when we, when we talked that next uh, that next year would be the year that we would begin to transition.
Okay, so, so what I would like to propose to my, my colleagues, um, adding on to what Councilmember DeBala has already um, noted, is that um, and I will make this a point to the city manager and the chief and a director of public works, that when we are presented uh, the budget for 27, um, that, that when we're talking about police vehicle acquisition, that some, um, a lot of this information and clarity regarding our ability to purchase uh, EVs come up during that time where we have some additional data, I'm hoping we'll have those data available. Um, and we'll be in a place to have a better idea in terms of any cost differentials that might also be able to be worked into the budget. Um, and then that way, ideally, if it's just about purchasing one or two, we know that we've already delayed two vehicles for purchase in FY27, and it gives us a little bit more time um, to do that necessary legwork, to get the information that we need in order to make sure that we're budgeting appropriately for those extra vehicles.
So, so if I understood you correctly, you said that in addition to the budget, you want uh, the budget uh, numbers that you would like to see in effect, a very specific plan on how to move ahead and what they need from us.
Mm-hmm.
And if we need to do that, we don't have to settle this today, but if we need to do that in a resolution uh, in the next few weeks, so that it's clear what we want for the budget, I can work on that.
I don't think, I mean, we have a budget priorities resolution that we already have to develop.
Right, so we can put it in there.
Yeah, so it can go in there. So what I am proposing is that we move forward with these three hybrids, because they've already cut back from five to three. We take the two that are gonna be in the FY27 budget and give very clear guidance to staff during the budget resolution, um, our budget priorities resolution around the inform, like that we want additional information and the possibility, and uh, including costs that could potentially be worked into the FY27 budget, so that we know going into the budget season that we've already pre-giving staff warning about what it is that we want, and worked in any additional costs into the FY27 budget. So this council doesn't find itself in this same place next year, when they're bringing two vehicles to us in the summer and asking, well, what's the difference? Do we have it in the budget? Why didn't you give us all of this data? We can ask for that now and work it into the FY27 budget.
Would you like to have that captured in here somewhere?
I mean, I think that it, we have our budget priorities resolution, that we can capture that. This is a, I, I see this more as a procurement item.
It is a procurement. Okay, I withdraw the um, the amendment on the two.
Good, so it has been moved by Councilmember Gilbert, seconded by Councilmember Westlech. Uh, Councilmember DeBala, is that Ollight? Councilmember Schlegel? Ollight?
Uh, no, currently.
Okay.
Thank you, uh, so just to be clear, we budgeted in the ERR for up to five vehicles, but it turned out that only three were needed. Um, it's, they, they followed their protocols, and they determined that three needed to be replaced this year. So it's not like we're in the hole for two vehicles.
No, um, please correct that.
That the money is carried over to next year, so all we did is move that money from the ERR from this year to next year. So we're gonna purchase the vehicles next year.
I understand, but I just character, just to characterize it accurately, it's not like we're limping along with two bad vehicles. The, the committee looked at the vehicles and said, these do not need to be replaced this year.
As we, as we do every year.
Okay, um, I think that with all due respect, I, I don't think we've received enough information to make a call right now this evening on this, and I would like to move that we table this ordinance until later in the fiscal year, when we can get clarity around some of these questions that may be just close enough that we could get answers. We are in a climate emergency, and I don't wanna do anything to compromise public safety, but um, we are in a climate emergency. So I think it's prudent, if we are close on potential further information, questions that could be answered from Hyattsville or other places in the country, and with the help of our Sustainable Maryland Committee, I think it's prudent and reasonable to just table this ordinance for tonight, and, and that's fully trusting what, what you're able to report right now, Chief DeVall. Um, but just recognizing that there are questions that you've said you, you don't have answers to right now. And uh, so that's my, my proposal to our, our council.
Okay, so is that an official motion?
That is a motion to table this.
Because I'm trying to really move us out of, out of. Okay, all those in favor of tabling this item until next week, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Aye. Upset. Motion does not pass. All right, right now on the floor is the um, single reading ordinance authorizing the purchase of police vehicles.
May I? Ma'am?
Yes.
May I comment? The reason that I proposed to put two forward now and hold back on one was very similar, but in recognition of how long it takes to order them and how long it takes to get them, and the need that is existing for the vehicles and the fact that I'm ready at improvement, that's why I proposed to do the two. I'm not the, do the two and hold back.
Thank you, where, where do we stand on Councilmember DeBala's?
I had withdrawn it.
She's withdrawn it right now. The most, what is on the floor is we are getting ready to vote on the single reading ordinance authorizing the purchase of police vehicles. That's where we are.
And, and again, no one had seconded DeBala when I said it, so I think that was part of why I withdrew.
Quick point of order.
Mm-hmm.
Um, the, we're voting on the ordinance, including the two underlined?
Correct.
Correct.
Thank you. All right. Okay, but the clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Landman?
Aye.
Councilmember DeBala?
Yes.
Councilmember Schlegel?
Nay.
Councilmember Gilbert?
Yes.
Councilmember Hansak?
Yes.
Aye.
Aye. Um, and can we take a quick, uh, because I, I just wanna make sure, yeah. Um, we're gonna take just a quick three minutes, and then we will, we'll reconvene. All right, just wanna make sure that our IT staff knows that we are going live. Are you ready? Okay, perfect. Okay, all right, well, thank you all so much for joining us after this break. Um, I do want to take a quick moment. Um, we have a resident that unfortunately, due to some um, technical issues on our end, um, did not get their opportunity to provide public comments, and I wanna make sure. First, I wanna apologize to you for, for us not being able to give you your time, and wanna make sure that we're able to give you your time now. So just as a reminder, you'll get three minutes, um, and so you can come up to the podium there.
Thank you, Your Honor, and thank you, Mayor, for your service at this time, and I really appreciate to see Roger, Cindy uh, in my ward. It's wonderful to see everyone here, and I, I really appreciate your leadership at a time when our country is suffering from a real uh, dearth or lack of leadership. Um, so I wanted to come here on behalf of the Flower Street Avenue community between Sligo Creek Parkway and Carroll. Um, I'm here tonight as a neighbor, a parent, and someone who cares deeply about the safety of everyone who lives and walks along Flower Avenue between Sligo and Carroll. We're talking about one of the more diverse blocks in our community. We have hundreds of renters on this street, we've got hundreds of children that take the bus every morning, we've got elderly, we've got homeowners, we've got dogs, we've got it all. Right now, we have zero traffic calming measures on this stretch, no speed humps, no raised crosswalks, nothing to slow the steady flow of speeding cars, buses, Amazon trucks, and Uber drivers who are using our street as a uh, alternative to uh, New Hampshire University, which is undergoing purple line construction. This is where families live, kids play, and renters walk to the bus, and yes, where dogs walk. Too many of us have seen close calls where people getting hurt, I have gotten hurt, we've gotten cars hit, we've yelled for drivers to slow down, we even have a civilian traffic calming committee that has to stand in front of trucks when the buses come in the morning to pick up the kids. This is how dangerous it is. We've worried every time a child steps towards the curb. It shouldn't take a tragedy for real change to happen on this street. It's not about slowing cars, this is about protecting our lives and our people. Uh, raised crosswalks, curb extensions, and speed humps tell drivers that this is a neighborhood that they can't just speed through, that they're proven, proven simple steps that can make a difference. We can't wait another year for traffic calming, I've spoken to Cindy about this. We cannot wait another two months. Someone will get hurt, I have pictures to prove it. Uh, I used to work for the Department of Transportation Borough, Park Commissioner, New York City, I've worked for the state transportation, I've worked at the federal level, I know we can get this done. Um, I wanna say that what is happening is some of our neighbors are more affluent neighbors, if you will, have pushed back against the traffic. Uh, they don't want their dogs to have to interface with Uber drivers and Amazon trucks. Um, their kids can walk safely to school. Uh, our safety matters, uh, this is an issue of equity, this is an issue of uh, support, this is an issue of safety. I've called the police department, I have called everyone up and down that can actually provide some support, and I have gotten zero answers, and I'm sorry, Cindy, I appreciate your leadership, but we need some support, and you've been very responsive to us, and we really do appreciate that, but we need some action. Let's make Flower Avenue a true neighborhood street, one that connects us instead of dividing us. A street where parents don't have to worry, kids can walk safely, and everyone, no matter who they are, can feel at home. A street where parents don't have to worry. Kids can walk safely, and everyone, no matter who they are, can feel at home. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Uh, Lori, can you just give us your name for the record?
Lori Schuman.
Schuman.
Uh, I'm at seven, three, one, four, uh Flower Avenue. Uh, we have a whole association of folks that need this support. Uh, Mayor, uh, Cersei, what can we expect as a follow up and a next step?
Sure. So I believe this segment of Flower was on the list for the traffic study. Yep. Yep. Move accent.
We could put some flowers in the road. We could put signs up, smoke signals. We got to do something. I'm telling you, the kids will get hurt.
No worries. Uh, Director Braithwaite, can we we chat in the morning about next steps on this one?
Awesome. We appreciate your leadership.
Thank you very much. Okay, all right. So, um, we have three more voting items. And then I am going to um make a change to the order of our work sessions, but let's try to get through these voting items. I think these should be a little less controversial. Uh, the first item is a single reading ordinance approving purchase of two security camera trailers. Uh, just checking with staff that there's been no modification um in terms of uh this particular um ordinance. Don't believe there have been any. Okay. Um, would someone like to move the single reading ordinance approving uh purchase of two security camera trailers?
So moved.
Thank you, Councilmember Westlake, for moving. Thank you, Councilmember Hansak, for seconding. Any points of discussion on this one? Okay. Seeing none, I think I see lights because people are ready to vote. Uh, would the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Landman. Councilmember DeBala.
Yes.
Councilmember Schlegel.
Aye.
Councilmember Gilbert.
Aye.
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 Aye. The next item is a resolution providing for appointments to the youth council. Um, just want to check in with our working group on committees to make sure there's nothing additional that needs to be shared. Okay. Not seeing any lights. Councilmember DeBala.
Yeah, I have a quick question. Um, does this list of people? I have a quick question for the committee. Does this list of people include the ex officio person? Or is that going to be done without? Okay, I missed that the first time. I'm sorry. All right, I'll take it back.
It's in the be it further resolved clause.
Yeah, all right, never mind. Answers the question.
Okay. All right, seeing no, um, would someone like to move the resolution providing for appointments to the twenty twenty five? Thank you, Councilmember Gilbert. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilmember Hansak, for seconding. All those in favor of the resolution providing for appointments to the twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six youth council, please say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Any abstain? All right. We are cooking with grease, folks.
Point of order, yes. Um, just I I forgot to mention, I just want to remind everybody that uh we collectively drafted a letter, and I guess actually, should we cert- how do we do that if we need to share that with the public or if anybody else wanted to comment on? It's a letter. It's a letter of invitation for the um youth council in which we collaboratively collaboratively put ideas forward about how they might engage with us moving forward in the in the year. If that's something people would like to, you know, add some more ideas to, feel free. We 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 did it with enthusiasm to try to excitedly, you know, move bring the youth council before us and say, hey, we're we're ready to to receive you. So um.
What's what's there?
I think it'd be a great idea to circulate it to the council. I could send it out.
Is that okay?
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Excuse me, Mayor, I don't want to get off track. Um, city clerk Carpenter, um, could you confirm when the installation date is for the youth council? Um, is it sixteenth October sixteen?
It's the thirteenth.
Okay, all right. So the sixteenth, yes, that's good. Good for us to know. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Schlegel. Okay, we're moving on to the next thing. Resolution designating Robert Disperdo as the resident agent for service of process. And I'll kind of quickly shoot things over to the city manager just to kind of give a little bit of context for this one.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, Maryland code uh requires the governing body, the council, uh of every political subdivision to file with the State Department of Assessments and Taxation a certification of a resident agent. If there is a change in the designated registered registered resident agent or change in address for the resident agent, city must file for the record that change with the State Department of Assessments and Taxation. Uh, currently, the designated resident agent for the city is still listed on the Estat website as Jessica Clark, uh, former deputy city manager, I believe. Um, the attached resolution would designate myself, city manager, Robert Disperdo, as the current resident agent for the city. And council has before it a resolution that would accomplish that, if that is your pleasure.
Thank you very much. Um, would Councilmember Landman?
I think we should issue him uh as our resident agent at the door and dark glasses before he assumes the responsibilities associated with this task.
I was thinking double oh seven, you know.
Great. All right, so uh would someone like to move the resolution designating um Robert Disperdo as the resident agent for service of process?
Uh, with full trust, I will so move.
Thank you, Councilmember Schlegel. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilmember Landman. All those in favor of designating Robert Disperdo as a resident agent for service of process? Aye. Do you have any opposed? Any abstain? All right. Okay, so the next item. I am going to, because we've had our representative from Avio here for some time. So what I would like to do is reorder the work session and uh have us have our contract for stop sign cameras item be the first work session for this evening. And and then we will move in the in the order of the police vehicles in the vacuum of noise complaints. Okay, all right. So um I'm going to turn things over to our police chief.
I apologize to Director Braithwaite in advance because this may take a while. So um we are pleased uh to present uh the proposal for our stop sign pilot program here in the city. Um, as many of you know, this was the city council priority. It also was a priority of our D twenty delegation. Uh, we worked uh with delegate Charcutian several years ago to try to get this legislation put in place. Um, it is ironic. It is pedestrian safety month. Um, that is why we are doing this. Uh, we are doing this to protect our children. We're doing this to protect pedestrians. Uh, we are hoping uh that this pilot program does that. Um, to be clear, um, we in Baltimore City are the only um organizations outside of Prince George's County that have been approved to uh inst- in- in- implement stop sign enforcement camera programs. Um, we are 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 very pleased. We have representatives from Avio, and I also have Captain Masadi, who uh led the charge with this. I'm going to bring him up, and he's just going to give you an overview of the contract and the program. And then uh we have, like I said, representatives from Avio that can answer any questions you may have.
Good evening. I'm Captain Matt Masadi, and I'm here tonight with our representative from Avio, Mr. Rob Carl. Uh, tonight, I want to give you guys a brief overview of Senate Bill six hundred and highlight key points of the city's stop sign camera pilot. Many of these points were touched on in our community meeting we held over the summer on July thirty first. Maryland General Assembly passed SB six hundred and twenty twenty five, authorizing only two jurisdictions, Tacoma Park and Baltimore City, to participate in a four-year pilot testing automated stop sign enforcement. The law's intent is simple, is to gather data. By twenty twenty seven, both cities must report to the governor and general assembly on how long the systems were in use and how many warnings or citations were issued, cost of the implementation and revenue collected, where systems were deployed, and how reliable they were. And most importantly, their effectiveness in reducing violations, crashes, and pedestrian injuries. For Tacoma Park, this program is about safety and accountability, not revenue. It's about learning whether automation can actually change driver behavior. Our approach is measured and limited. Cameras will be placed only at intersections with clear patterns and noncompliance, crash history, or repeated community complaints. The police department in Avio reviewed each location for visibility, signage, and sightlines before installation. The contract is cost neutral. It's a thousand dollars per month for each camera and eight dollars and fifty cents per violation. Avio installs and maintains the systems and is paid only from citation revenue. If revenue falls short, the balance rolls over, and if it's still unpaid at the end of the term, it's waived. If the camera goes offline for an extended period of time, the month's fee is credited. There's no financial risk to the city or taxpayers with respect to normal operation of the program. Every potential violation is reviewed by a trained city employee, not Avio. And I want to stress that no citation is ever issued automatically. Citations are issued only for vehicles passing a stop sign at a speed exceeding six miles per hour. This mirrors officer discretion, targeting unsafe roll-throughs, not cautious drivers. The program also includes equity safeguards. Automation removes potential officer bias. Uh, correct. Review reviewers see only vehicle behavior. Throughout the pilot, we'll track violation rates, crash and near miss data, pedestrian cyclist injuries, public feedback, and cost versus revenue. Those results will be formally reported to the state in twenty twenty seven. In short, this pilot lets Tacoma Park test an innovative safety tool, balancing technology, human judgment, and community transparency, while protecting taxpayers and focusing on what matters most, making our streets safer forever. And with that, I'm going to open it up with for myself and Mr. Rob Carl. We're happy to answer any questions you may have.
Great. Wonderful. Well, thank you so much, and I just want to um remind my colleagues, as was stated um by the chief earlier, uh, that moving this item forward during this year's um legislation was not an easy feat. Um, it was a priority that this council um pushed District Twenty to um to move forward on, and they delivered. Uh, so I know that uh there's a lot of anxiety in the community because no one likes the possibility of getting ticketed for a rolling stop. Uh, but I do just want to um reiterate that um this is uh uh an activity that this council in particular really pushed to try to make sure got moved forward, and um we are in a very unique place to be able to implement um these stop sign cameras. And so just want to send my appreciation to um uh our police department. I know folks who are advocating, as well as members of council, um, that were also writing testimony and and providing feedback, because without that advocacy and and delicate Charcutian's hard work, we wouldn't be able to be on this rider. Um, and so with that, I'm going to kind of turn things over to see if there are any comments or questions on this one. Councilmember DeBala.
Yes, thank you. Um, I'm glad to see you here today, and I I apologize for not realizing that was you recording. Um, I I, as I said earlier tonight, I've had a lot of residents on all the sides of this issue make comments, so I have um one comment of my own and um four questions, uh, which I sent forward to you all earlier today. Um, so the comment be based on um what I noticed and on what uh uh you just said earlier um about the equity issues is that I think that the equity uh statement here could be could be revised. Um, maybe even in retrospect, it might be worth it. I want you guys to decide, because it is more ju- more than just a straight ahead, um, not disproportionately impacted, actually, in some ways will benefit some of our equity concerns. So that's just a comment for you all to decide. Um, if you want to change it. Um, the question uh to clarify the several goals of the program and any um studies or um or or experiences that support the 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 use of stop sign cameras in other communities to to achieve these goals of compliance, as I understand it. It's increasing compliance, it's traffic safety, no precious, as well as pedestrian and um bicycle safety. So so is what's the 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 studies and the experience on this? Residents keep sending stuff to me, so I assume you all know the 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 range of.
Good evening, everyone. I appreciate the opportunity to come here and answer questions and uh say hello. Uh, the program has been running in eight other municipalities in Peachy County. Uh, we have a night that is now about to come online, but uh the results have been absolutely amazing. Uh, anywhere from forty to as high as sixty five percent reduction within the first four months of deployment. So we absolutely are seeing the results that we want to see. Uh, so it's it's really been positive and, you know, certainly hopeful, and we'll have the same results here. There isn't a community that hasn't at least seen a forty five percent reduction.
In compliance.
In compliance.
In noncompliance, excuse me.
In violation drop, right?
Violation drop. And then the assumption is violation drop and good safety on the ground.
Absolutely.
Um, how will you provide notice to residents? How long the grace period? That kind of thing. When you when you have ninety days to get them in and i- according to the contract, and then how does the how does that notice and grace? Is there a grace period? How's that all going to work?
Very similar to our state's speed quarter program.
Mm hmm.
Passive social. Race period where all violations are only going to be sent out in warnings.
Okay, great. Um, last question. Um, several residents brought up to me the con- the idea of that there may be behavioral change of changing their traffic pattern in response to the location of the stop sign cameras. What's been the experience so far in the eight communities? Have they seen traffic shift from this street to the street one over that doesn't have the stop sign camera? And people on that second street, they're getting all getting all the vehicles that you s- yeah, what have you got to say about that?
I I think there's been probably minimal amount of that happening. What we're actually hearing when I chat with the chiefs of the other departments is they're actually seeing a spillover effect, which is what we want to see, is people actually changing the behavior. Uh, I think so much of this is simply lack of awareness. Um, I, you know, when I see the numbers we do violence, the numbers are still making me fall out of my chair. So so much of it is just it's awareness, and when people become just aware, they just suddenly change the behavior themselves, right? So uh I I can't say none, uh, because there's always going to be people that are just, you know, uh, determined to uh speed or go quickly and find a way around things, but by and large, we're we're seeing uh behavior change.
Okay, well, thank you. I appreciate that. It sounds like a good one, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember DeBala. Councilmember Landman?
Uh, thank you. I'm very excited about this program, and I and I really um am glad that it's focused in our school zones, which is part of the legislation, because that's where we have significant, you know, safety risk for children. I have two quick questions, and the first may sound like a dumb question. It probably is, but you referred to it and explained it in the materials as cost neutral. And um that's a little confu- I understand the idea that it's not going to wind up um with us being out of pocket because the and the fines will cover the cost, but does it? Can you explain what you mean by cost neutral um in terms of what happens with the fines? Uh, in case the fines that we wind up receiving exceed the cost of implementing the program? Um, I'm not clear on what that means. Um, should we wind up accidentally with some money in our pockets? Is that a sin under the program? I'm not clear.
Are you asking if we make more money than it costs to run the program?
Yeah, is that prob- it's what happens? How does the term cost neutral?
Cost neutral would be uh just strictly to the us, city.
Okay, but we don't have, it's not problematic if the fines exceed the cost of implementing the program. That's not what you mean by cost neutral, is it?
Not the way. No, not the way the legislation is written.
Okay, legislation doesn't prohibit us actually winding up with uh in the in the green and not in the red?
That's correct. That's correct. And and from our perspective, cost neutral is simply that we will never send you all city a bill for anything, right? And from our perspective, cost neutral is simply that we will never send you all, city, a bill for anything, right? The program is either going to be cost neutral, or we have discussions about what, you know, hopefully, hopefully the problems result itself, right? And that's the ultimate goal is we want to work ourselves down to where there's zero violations, we have a hundred percent compliance.
I mean, I imagine it's going to, it's going to be more like our speed camera program where we see a spike in revenues. And then as people learn that there's a cost associated with running stop signs, we will see a precipitous drop, and that will be good for our safety and eventually wind up being not particularly useful for revenues. But that's okay, because we'll be safer. So that's what we predict, I assume, but we, okay. My second and my last question is, I've heard from several people who are excited about this program, but would like to see it at their corner, but they're not on the initial list. And as people experience it in one place and violations go down there, are you anticipating that you'll be moving the cameras around over the course of the pilot from one place to another? Is that part of our strategy? And do you have a list of the second set of potential locations already in mind? Or are you open to suggestions for further locations?
Program itself is designed to just gather data right now, and so that's absolutely what we're intending to do. We're open to exploring new locations as the pilot. Of course, we have four years to do this, so moving the cameras to different locations, especially if one location has significantly dropped violations. It's in both ours and Avio's interest to explore that location.
Thank you, Councilmember Lannan. Councilmember Schlegel?
Thank you. And I appreciate the answers to all the questions that I put forward. I've done my best to make sense of the contract. Can you please explain how does that thousand dollar a month charge change as compliance increases? Because I kind of missed that. Somehow Avio doesn't charge as much if the revenue from a particular installation is going down?
So I guess I'll answer what I think is the first part is the thousand dollars a month. A thousand dollars a month is the support maintenance, right? Maintaining the pole and making sure that if there's any failure in anything, right? Making sure that we've got our service technicians that all live locally Maryland, right? So that's what that cost is. So that cost is fixed regardless of violation. I think ultimately what you're asking is if there aren't enough violations to pay that, you know, how is all that handled? And that's ultimately where, again, it comes back to cost neutral, right? If there isn't enough violations to cover the cost of maintaining the pole, then that's when there's a discussion to move it or potentially just take it down. So the idea is we want to resolve the problem, but again, we don't want to have it ever where you all are in a position where there's a fee or a cost or something to you.
I understand. Okay, thanks. That clarifies. In the Prince George's jurisdictions, what are, what rolling speed is calibrated as falling within the threshold where a citation isn't produced?
PG County, most of jurisdictions today, there are, let me say, there's probably half that if you don't stop, you're getting a citation. The law is the law, and you're supposed to stop. There are other ones that use their judgment if they were out in, if it was an officer out there actually watching the violation, what would their judgment be? Would they write a ticket or would they not, right? So there's honestly some latitude there, candidly from department to department in terms of kind of what is determined where they want to issue a citation. But technically, the law is stop, so, but it's kind of a mixed bag.
Okay, because, thank you, because what I learned today was that our calibration request would be six miles per hour as the threshold. And I mean, that's kind of a slow run or a fast, fast jog. And I was wondering two things. Is that seen by our department as the safe threshold under which a citation wouldn't be occurring? And also, how does this jive with the enabling legislation, which kind of says a stop is a full stop under law for this pilot?
So the law does say a full cessation of.
Could I ask you to get closer to the mic? I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. The law does say a full cessation of stop. But what we've experienced is, especially after seeing the Avio pilot program, which only showed violations that did not come to a full cessation. We were getting a massive amount of vehicles. And then when we got out there and drove our cars, really paying attention to our speedometers. And it's really shocking to see that none of us really ever come to a full cessation of movement when we're passing through our back. Right, and so again, this program is not to generate revenue. It's to try and, you know, make the roads safer. So we're not trying to be a punitive force out there for the community. If six miles per hour turns out to be where we're seeing vehicles moving too quickly through the intersection, we can adjust the calibration. But, you know, going forward, we thought six was a good healthy starting zone.
And that's not going to put us into conflict with the state when we go and report, and they say, oh, you didn't do what we wanted the experiment to be?
But I think it's discretionary of how we want to use Avio's technology.
Okay, and the last question is, you mentioned the forty percent or forty-five percent violation drop in the Prince George's communities. Is that community-wide or at the intersections with cameras? Because our pilot requires us to report both of those changes to the state. Are you seeing a forty-five percent drop across the communities?
That is harder to judge. It's harder to determine, not a camera every place, right? All we can go on is anecdotal information that we receive from chief and other councils that they live in the communities, right? What are they seeing? What is the behavior they're seeing just throughout the community? And overwhelmingly, we are hearing that they are seeing a change in the behavior. So unfortunately, I can't specifically quantify it, right? But certainly by everything we're hearing, it sounds like it is having the desired effect beyond just.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Schlegel. Councilmember Hanzak?
Thank you. I'm pretty excited about these. I know there will be naysayers, but I'm excited about the safety benefits. I just have a few questions. One is, so just to clarify, we, our city will receive any additional money above and beyond whatever we pay out, right? I mean, the money is coming to us first, and then we're paying the contract, yes, essentially?
Avio takes their money first, and then everything after that.
Comes to us. Okay, so, okay, thank you for clarifying. Just make sure. And so does that go into a special fund? It does, right? And that may be a question for our city manager. Do we have a separate fund for those monies? Is it going to the general fund, or is it going into a stop?
City has their own regulation on how that money can be spent. The money that comes in can likely be spent here to help for our public safety.
For public safety, okay. Thank you for that clarification. And then, and then finally, with regard to the specific intersections that have been selected, and I apologize if there might be materials that I may have missed, so feel free to repeat it for my benefit. Can you, I'm looking, I'm looking at some intersections I know of in Ward Five that are specifically associated with our school, our school that is a little bit different than the Tacoma Park School, so Rolling Terrace. So for example, we've got kids, we've got two main bus stops that are in our ward. One is at Flower and Domer is probably, and a little bit up in that area. And then the other huge, huge one is at Flower and Roanoke. Now, I haven't taken a close look at the analytics on the number of crashes at any of these sites. But can you tell me whether or not the ones that you have selected are by and large our highest accident intersections? And would it make sense for me to just probe a little bit after this session about some of those other intersections that I'm thinking of?
I don't have the list of intersections in front of me. I do know that there were some locations along Flower Ave that were selected.
There's one here on this list that we got, right? Oh, I'm sorry, you're right. Well, one, I'm sorry, one in Ward Five. One related, honestly, to the specific relationship to the school crossings that are as different from school crossings related to our Tacoma Park schools. Does that make sense? Like where kids are going to, like Rolling Terrace?
The legislation says. Aren't there several terraces? Still justify that cameras?
Yeah, no, that's why I'm asking about it, just if, but I'm interested in the data that's being used to identify the sites. I mean, and is it accurate that these sites that you have selected are generally speaking, some of our, we have the highest crash data for pedestrians, for example, at some of these, or car crashes, or what?
There's a mixture of, you know, community complaints, crash data, and traffic stops that, you know, we have had with, available to us. As per like intersection, by intersection, didn't really look at, you know, which intersection had the highest crash data. It was a kind of a mix of collecting that data and decided that we needed to place a camera in this location. Now, again, we could be over to moving cameras as the program continues on if we see that we could have a better effect.
Okay, how is community complaint related to crash data? I mean, sorry, I'm being very blunt, but isn't crash data a lot more relevant than community complaints in terms of public safety?
Well, crash data is good data for us to use, definitely. However, there's could be a varying number of reasons why a crash occurred in that area. It couldn't, might not have been attributed to a stop sign.
I see.
So we did take that into account, but we mix it in with other data as well.
Okay, I'm bringing that up just because I believe when I looked at the Ward Five data for crash data, not having all that other background that you talked about, you know, like about why the crashes happened, but I could see which ones were auto, which ones were pedestrian. I did note that there were more crashes around the Domer and Flower Avenue, which also happens to be where we have a crossing guard because that is where our kids cross to get over to schools, and it's a bus stop. So just, and it gets closer to some of our more densely populated areas. Just saying, I'd be interested in further dialogue if there is such dialogue to be had after this work session. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Hanzak. Councilmember Gilbert?
Thank you, Captain, and thank you both for being here. Couple of quick questions. One is regarding your review process, and the other is about the appeal process. You mentioned there would be civilians and sworn officers that will be reviewing the citations. And the second part of that question is, are there progression photos or is video they're going to be reviewing?
I can speak on the, it can be both civilian and sworn officers properly trained through Avio. And you said we don't have to do just fully sworn for review process. And the second part of your question, it is video.
Video.
That's correct.
And as far as the appeals process, is it pretty much the same as our speed camera program? Is there going to be onsite ombudsman that can deal with some preliminary stuff before the resident can file an appeal? And with that appeal, what's the district court? How does that work?
Yeah, that's exactly how it works. So if they get a citation, they can certainly appeal it or ask for their court date and go for the district court and argue their case. So very much like, you know, any other, I guess, violation I personally don't give them out. But, yeah, they certainly have a chance to go before a judge and challenge.
I know for the speed camera program, there was like a first step before that when someone's car may have been stolen, and they could appeal directly to the police department for some things, and we can keep that stuff from appearing in district court.
Yeah, that same, that same process can happen where they can say that the car was stolen or whatever it may be. I could give you more specifics on it, but it really does follow exactly what the district court allows. But they can submit, I believe, they can submit their request and state that our tags were stolen, et cetera. So there is recourse, because we do understand those things happen. It's one of the things we try to do is look at the vehicle type against the, what it's supposed to be, right? So that hopefully we're catching those types of things as well and bringing to law enforcement's attention.
Great, thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Gilbert. I just want to remind my colleagues that I've already given, allocated us twice the amount of time that was originally planned for this topic. And we are now down to two minutes and fifty-one seconds. Councilmember Schlegel?
Regarding the necessary additional signage for school zones and any potential moving of stop lines, how extensive is that work going to have to be? Do we have to mark school zones all over the perimeter of a school zone? Or just as one's approaching one of these camera installations? I only recently realized that that was part of the requirement.
Typically, what we've seen is either signs can go up on any of the town marquees coming into the towns just saying, hey, you're potentially under automation, traffic automation. Or in some cases, we have communities where they have put a sign directly on the stop sign post, right? That says this camera is, or this stop sign is being recorded for violations, right? So.
It has to say school zone correctly, according to this pilot?
They have to be within a half mile of the school. That's correct.
Okay, I guess we could take this, I'll just propose this, because, yeah, just trying to make sure whether it has to say school zone or what in this pilot.
Yeah, I haven't, what we have seen is folks just wanting to post signs, right? Just saying, hey, stop sign enforcement, that type of thing. So I don't know that.
Thank you. No, and I just want to confirm, typically, school zones are identified through other signage. It is possible, Councilmember Schlegel, to your question, that there could be multiple stops, stop signs within a school zone. But not all stop signs will have a camera. So it is important for us to identify school zones for various reasons, not just, you know, in terms of cameras, but for other purposes and certain activities that people need to know they cannot do in a school zone, and those signs already exist. All right, well, I just want to say thank you all very much. As I look at this list, three of these areas are in my neighborhood. And I'm going to have to slow down. Believe me, I have no problems with touting the valuable lesson I have learned by driving in DC and getting a couple of these tickets. I now come to a full stop at every stop sign I encounter in the district of Tacoma. And so, and so my hope, my hope is that people will do the same. You get burned a couple of times, and you will learn a valuable lesson, that you come to a full stop at every single stop sign in the city of Tacoma Park. So I appreciate you all doing this work and moving this forward because I think it is going to be really important for improving pedestrian safety within our community. So thank you all so much. All right, so we are going to go to procurement of two Public Works vehicles.
I am really happy to be presenting some EVs to you this evening. Wouldn't want to be bringing up some gas-powered vehicles. As you know, we have a fleet review committee that evaluates replacements. We also have standard both miles and age criteria that we use when looking at vehicles. And another aspect of that is the condition of the vehicle. So in both these cases, as I explained in the cover sheet, they met the conditions for replacement. One of the vehicles we want to replace is used by our right-of-way division. The other is used for our building maintenance division. In this particular case, we'd like to alter the type of vehicle that they're currently assigned for building maintenance. We had transitioned to a transit ban. It just has proven to be. It just has proven to be too small, um, not very helpful in terms of some of the work that they need to do in terms of hauling things. Plywood, drywall, two by fours, uh, which happens on occasion. It also tends to be a very difficult vehicle to see within. If you've seen a transit, they don't tend to have windows, uh, so it makes it a little less safe to drive. So then the supervisor's recommendation for quite some time that when the vehicle replacement was scheduled, that they would prefer a pickup truck. As a more efficient and more helpful vehicle. So in looking at vehicles, uh, and in, in keeping with the city's goals and the council's goals and our fleet, um, transition policy. Because there was an applicable, um, EV available that would more than sufficiently meet our needs. We really just priced EVs. We also, um, asked for hybrid prices. In this particular case, and one of the things I wanted to mention is that, uh, forecasting cost. You might as well have a Ouija board. It, it, it's very hard to say. In this particular case with the, um, comparison of some smaller hybrid trucks like Mavericks, uh, to the EV, uh, Lightning, Ford Lightning. It was only a few thousand dollars difference, um, so the price was fairly competitive. We didn't even price gasoline, um, pickup trucks because, um. It did not meet our goals in terms of transition that the, um, applicable, uh, electric engine was clearly there and available with a long track record. It, it has proven itself over time. It's a, so we, we basically are suggesting that we, uh, approve those two EVs for the fleet. In terms of charging, uh, capacity, we have, uh, up at Public Works, a level two charger, uh, that's, uh, currently unassigned. We have another, um, uh, level two charger that is assigned to our EV sweeper. So there is the ability to use that charger during the day if there would be a need, but it's, it's particularly assigned to the, to the sweeper. Uh, one of the things as, as you mentioned in, uh, just a couple of weeks ago, you approved the fleet charging, um, contract award. We are going to be adding, um, uh, two level two chargers, uh, up, up at Public Works. So this would definitely, um, assist us with, um, maintaining charge for the right away assigned vehicles, which will be parked. At Public Works. We're also planning to use the other charger for our, um, mowing trailer, which is all electric equipment. So there'll be battery components and charging available there. For the fleet charging that's coming, and again, crossing back to the old topic, uh, what we're going to be adding in for specific for fleet fleece. Fleet is a level two charger with two ports, so two cars can charge at once. And two, I mean, a fast charger with two ports and two level two chargers with single ports. So we'll have the ability to charge four vehicles at one time, uh, with the fleet, um, fleet charging that's coming up. We anticipate those chargers to be in place by the end of the year. There is some time sensitivity to that, both for the PEPCO rebates as well as the MEA rebate. So we're anxiously awaiting, um, uh, the schedule from our contractor now that we have a signed contract. But back to the topic at hand, uh, this is a pretty standard replacement for our, um, uh, pickup trucks of use in the, in the vehicles. For our divisions and, um, that, that's what we have in front of you this evening.
Great, thank you so much. Councilmember Tabala.
Thank you very much. Um, a couple of questions, three questions. One is that, uh, this is obviously more than you expected it to be. So, uh, could you just shed some light for all of us on the available ERR funds that would be used to cover this? That's the first of my three.
Sure. Um, the ERR topic is one that, um, would take a long time to fully orient and remind people about how we work the Equipment Replacement Reserve. Currently, the way the Equipment Replacement Reserve has been set up is the purchase price is the key component that calculates the future replacement. Dollars needed. So the purchase price times years, times three percent inflation computes to a replacement value. So that's the way the formulas are typically set up unless we override them within the spreadsheet itself. So the, the price that you see, um, and, and historically we sometimes are above, sometimes below, you know? It, it again, uh, would take a crystal ball sometimes, uh, but that is our, what we lay out in our five year CIP with vehicle equipment. It's using that formula based on the original price of the vehicles. Yes, so that's, it, it's not that we, uh, a year ago said, oh, this is what it's going to cost and then, oh, no, we're surprised we are way off. Uh, we use the formula typically unless we are clearly aware of a difference in price. Or we're clearly aware that we're making a change, uh, to the type of vehicles. For instance, um, as trash truck, uh, prices, um, skyrocketed, we elevated the cost for our trash truck replacement. Again, it was a guess, uh, but we, we knew that it would, going to take more than our formula was showing. The other, you know, unknown right now is the impact of tariffs on, uh, vehicle prices in particular and how long the tariffs are going to be in place, whether they're going to come and go. It's, it's.
And so, so then within that, go ahead.
Director Brinkley, can you, so within the formula that you're, you're describing now? How are you all anticipating or planning for future costs associated with electrification of certain vehicles?
We've been taking kind of a wait and see attitude at this point, um, for a number of reasons. One is that as, um, more EVs enter the market like we've seen in the past. Sometimes the cars, costs of the cars are fairly comparable sedan prices, for instance, an EV sedan is pretty similar to a, um, a gasoline powered sedan. So we haven't seen the need to increase prices in that regard. Others we purchased so infrequently, uh, or they aren't available. Um, and so we're waiting for a model that would be equivalent to come out. So we have a lot of unknowns. So we have not taken a formal stance at automatically, uh, adding a factor, uh, for electrification into the fleet replacement. That is something that we can explore and come back with you. I, I think we would need to talk with some, uh, fleet experts, uh, to, to get a better sense of that. One of the things I would caution, um, is that we aren't currently funding the Equipment Replacement Reserve to the level that it needs to be based on the formula. So again, perhaps we shouldn't, but when I get asked that question, I think you're not funding it now at the lower cost. Why are we even having this conversation about the higher costs? And again, it has to do with the intention of the Equipment Replacement Reserve and how that it's set up. And from time to time, there's differences of opinion on the policy of how that system works. As it was structured by our accounting firm many, many decades ago. Their intention was to put a year's worth of cost for each vehicle over the life, over its intended life. So you would end up with a bankroll of many dollars awaiting their future use. We can show you and have shown you the Equipment Replacement Reserve, which doesn't have funding much past the year twenty eight or twenty nine. So we're not funding out year purchases the way this, the, um, system is intended. So we're already borrowing from the future to pay for our stuff now. And we've been doing that almost since the, since at, at least more than a decade. Early on, when the Equipment Replacement Reserve was created, we were very vigilant about it and we, we did it, but we also didn't have police vehicles in there. We, we didn't have a lot of other things that are in there now. The Equipment Replacement Reserve has grown over time to include all types of equipment, including, um, police fleet and others. And if the city wants to continue that process, it needs to take a hard look at, are we going to be. Funding the Equipment Replacement Reserve in the way it was intended or are we going to come up with another, uh, strategy or poli, a policy? But I do need to just throw that out there as a caveat, um, that if you're asking us, you know, what year frame are we going to fund? Is, you know, ten year scenario for police cars or a thirteen year scenario for Public Works vehicles? Um, and if we are, then we need to get serious about, um, uh, the policy that we're using to fund the Equipment Replacement Reserve.
Thank you. And I'm sorry, I had to, Councilmember Tabala.
That's part, part of what I was getting at. So then the, the fact that these are more expensive than what was estimated for a bunch of really good reasons. Then is that a budget amendment or is that to essentially use ERR funds this year and replace them next year? Or what did you need by available funds?
Well, the, the ERR is a big pot of money.
Right.
Only on paper is it assigned to each vehicle. There is no, there is nor, no formal dollars per vehicle in an account. Right? It's just one big total sum of money that exists in the Equipment Replacement Reserve. And we assign it on paper, uh, for that year's purchases and anything that isn't spent goes into future years purposes. So we have a big, uh, a big pot of money that can be used for, uh, appropriate equipment that has been approved. So that, that balance will use, be used to cover any, um, difference in estimated budget versus actual cost.
Okay, thank you. Second question. Do we know about the experience of others with the, with the Ford, with the new Ford truck? I mean, recognizing that this is a Public Works vehicle and not a patrol perceived vehicle.
Yeah, yeah.
But just asking a simple question.
Yeah, there is, uh, we have both, you know, uh, personal experience. Many of us know people that have a Lightning, uh, and have had conversations with those owners about the use of the vehicle. As well as talking to the dealers and their experience with selling them and, and maintaining them. We haven't heard anything negative, uh, about the Ford Lightning. It's, it's been fa- fairly well reviewed and, and fairly well received. In terms of the kind of use function, we don't have quite that difference between personal vehicle and patrol car. I mean, I, I guess one might say that we might even use our pickup trucks a little more gingerly than say a building contractor. That's driving, you know, a hundred miles every day back and forth. So there could be some, some argument that our, because our city is so small, two point two square miles, we tend to keep our vehicles within our city. There are times that we drive to Rockville or Annapolis or whatever, but for the most part, it's very local driving. It's not over rough road driving. It's all, you know, paved roadways. It's all fairly, uh, contained and, and normal type of, um, operations within the truck.
Not that you should chase bandits or.
Yeah, yeah. So we, you know, expect it to work quite well, uh, for our fleet. We think it's, it's an ideal candidate for an EV vehicle, again, for those same reasons. Very low mileage on a per day basis, easy ability to, um, charge. And we will have all overnight charging available. We only use the, other than snowstorms and things like that. We're just here on an eight hour schedule, so we have the remainder of the time. To be able to, to charge. There is also the ability to, um, share chargers within divisions, you know, as our fleet size increases, we may start having to. You have Monday, you have Tuesday, you have one, you know, we may have to start doing that. But again, because we don't anticipate fully expending the battery's worth of, of mileage within, you know, maybe even a week. It should not, we don't perceive that as a, as a concern.
Okay, and then my third question, which you just started to talk about, had to do with the charging, um, and whether you have to schedule all of that. So you, I think you said that you have a level two charger now at Public Works and you were going to add two. But then there's the ones at the pool, uh, here at the community center and they are currently.
We have a fast charger in the rear and a level two charger in the rear.
For the public?
Yes, and we have a level two charger on the, on the Grant Avenue side.
Okay, and those are used for.
Any vehicles as well as. Yeah, they're, they're publicly available, so city vehicles can use them or the public can use them.
I'm not right now, but I am curious about the use of those in terms of, um, police vehicles versus, uh, residential vehicle, uh, the general public. And in building the capacity for vehicle charging here at this facility as well as at Public Works.
Yeah, yeah.
And that is it for me. This sounds like a great idea. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Tabala. Councilmember Hansak.
Very quick question, uh, just to, to shed light on many of the questions that Councilmember Tabala was asking. Have we already modified, um, the criteria for retiring vehicles with respect to the, the oncoming e-vehicles? Is that, would you foresee that a change would eventually be needed? And I'm, I'm just kind of curious and thinking about the, the, the financial aspects and how that might change the ERR.
Yeah, I, I, we don't know yet and aren't comfortable making a prediction as to whether or not, uh, will an EV pickup truck will last longer than the thirteen years? That we had previously assumed a gas, uh, pickup truck would, would last. Uh, there's a lot of other things that go into that condition rating.
Right.
Miles is certainly one. We never hit the mile criteria be, because we're such a small, compact city. But wear and tear on vehicles and, and it's used, how many accidents it's been in, those types of things tend to weigh heavily on replacement needs. Even though we meet criteria, we still evaluate the vehicle and look at the cost, the maintenance cost. Because we do the bulk of our maintenance in-house, uh, particularly for older vehicles. We know what it costs, uh, to keep them on the road, uh, year by year. In their early years, they're under warranty and so that's all handled by the dealer. But, you know, after you pass that warranty period, most of the maintenance is done by the city unless it's something ma, very major, like an engine replacement or full transmission replacement.
In so much as it can eventually affect our ERR, I don't know which direction actually, but, uh, what, what do you foresee? Just so we have it on the mind as we move forward about when that kind of thing is going to take place? Cause we are increasingly getting more e-vehicles.
Yeah, I, I would anticipate that where we'll see that savings, uh, is in our maintenance budgets, not in our replacements budget.
So. But in terms of periodicity, like, um, I mean, I get, like, right now, you're, let's just say that a given vehicle has a thirteen year timeline. Wouldn't we imagine that that timeline might be in general, one direction or another for any given vehicle type?
I haven't seen the data. I haven't seen that data.
Right, so I mean, do, do you think there, that we need to, as a council, uh, consider that as we move forward to like? Find a time where we say, hey, maybe we need to look at our criteria after we have five years of data, after we have.
Yeah, I think we would need many, many more years. I don't, I don't think we're ready now. Because again, when you're talking about longevity of a vehicle, until you have a vehicle that's lived what you can consider its useful life. And if it's an EV, I mean, our priuses are going way longer than many, many more years than.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking. I'm just thinking it may really affect our ERR and then it might, might affect the way we think about future vehicle purchases, knowing what we have in the ERR. And whether or not we can afford to, I don't say spend more, anyway.
Yeah, well, I would so call you to take a look at our replacement schedules because we keep our vehicles for a very long time.
Exactly, no, and we're not funding it now.
Yeah, other, other than, uh, other than police vehicles, which are on an eight year replacement schedule, all of the other city vehicles are ten, thirteen, fifteen year. And they're not vehicles that we're replacing with, uh, any great frequency.
Thank you, Councilmember Hansak. Councilmember Landman.
By Tacoma Park standards, those are brand new cars. I'm just speaking from my personal experience. I have a question about this whole issue that you, that you're alluding to, that's very, very important about trying to figure out how we think about costs. Because the fuel costs, uh, you know, of gasoline powered engines versus, um, uh, electric powered engines. We don't, we're, there's a lot of cost savings to be attributed to an EV vehicle, I assume. And when we're charging the EV vehicles with our. How, how are we, um, right now, when we, when the vehicle is purchased from the ER, using the ER money? We're not factoring in the fact that later on, I think it's our operating budget that, I guess, is the, the purchase of, uh, fuel. And, and so presumably, um, we're building in the, the cost of maybe a, potentially initially a higher vehicle cost, but maybe not. Dance and support, but we're actually, we're projecting savings that are actually accruing to our operating budget and not our purchasing budget. I don't know, that kind of makes my head explode that somehow or other, we ought to be thinking about those savings as sort of, you know, trickling over to the ERR budget somewhere from our operating budget, maybe.
Yeah, potentially. The other piece of that is, um, fuel efficiency has been increasing every, every few years. So that's been a, this isn't a new, a new thing to think about yet. Fuel efficiency has been in, drastically increasing for the types of vehicles that we drive.
Interestingly, I was speaking to, uh, expert on, um, battery yesterday. He told me that the efficiency of his electric car battery is also increasing year on year, which really struck me as interesting. I'd never heard that before. But on top of that, my question is like, right now, people. But on top of that, my question is like, right now, people are sharing our, um, EV chargers here at City Hall. How does the, uh, power purchasing work when the city plugs in a car? Are we able to track how much we're spending on electric, uh, charging and is public, I assume, and for what they're buying? So are you?
Yeah, we've got a, we've got a kind of a, we're very much looking forward to getting our fleet chargers in place because they are what we may, you may have heard the term before, networked. So they will be fully, uh, will be able to get tons of information, what vehicle charged, how long they charged, what was the efficiency? What was the rate at the time? We're gonna get more data than we are ever gonna be able to evaluate. Right now, our EVI chargers are not networked at all. They're a black box. Uh, other than paying our electric bill, we don't know how many, how many charging sessions it has, how frequently the charging lasts. How, we don't, we don't have any data. Uh, and that's a reflection of the timeframe in which we got those chargers, which networking was not a thing back then. Uh, so that information wasn't baked into the process itself and how quickly the technology and the expectations are, are advancing. Our MEA grant very specifically says we have to report annually our, all that user data. Frequency of charging, length of charging, you know, all that information. So there is, uh, growing, there'll be a growing, uh, amount of data that we'll have available once we install networked chargers that have that ability to track and download specific charging information. So currently with the chargers the city has on its property, uh, they're tied into our electric panel. So they're just a component of our electric bill. When people use the EVI chargers, they're paying with their credit card for the charger. Um, part, part of the issue we're having with our current vendor is we haven't been able to negotiate a fair arrangement to assist with the cost of that electricity. And you may also recall when we first got chargers, the city paid, there was no charge to charge. And we paid entirely because we were wanting to encourage it. So, you know, we have transitioned, uh, over time based on the intention at, at that time. So we're very much looking forward to getting state-of-the-art chargers that will be able to track that kind of data in the future.
Thank you, Councilmember Landman. Councilmember Schlegel.
Yeah, just to wake us up a little, I'm gonna throw a couple of bad puns in here. Uh, so I wanted to thank you for your analysis of like the challenging situation with our ERR. And I know there's someone to your right who has also been aware of that for some time. Um, so you, you were suggesting that we have a pattern of a lack of commitment to filling the tank in the ERR, so to speak. That was the first pun. Um, so for budgeting purposes, I wanted to put a plug in for an idea that came up, uh, I think last spring, about moving the, the cost of charging stations into the ERR. So that we can see that equipment as, as part and parcel of our equipment inventory, our vehicle inventory. Cause it's not used for anything but vehicles. And maybe that's something that Deputy City Manager Eubanks or City Manager Dispirito might want to address as to whether that would be possible.
We certainly will have cost information now for the first time. And we, we didn't know what the prior chargers cost because they were paid for by a state grant and owned by a private company. Uh, but now that we've gone out to bid, uh, we have, uh, more experience than we've had before, uh, five separate bids about the cost of chargers. Uh, we're also partnering with Monterey County as part of their DOT grant. They're gonna be doing nine D chargers, so we'll get a ton of information about costs. Uh, though they are anticipating significant, um, electrification make-ready costs uh, far beyond what we envision our needs to be, where you actually have to put in transformers, power lines. Yeah, major, major transitions. Um, so we will have information about totally, I mean, you approved a budget that purchased our, uh, EV chargers. So we will have dollar figures for those EV chargers. And in talking with the vendor, we can find out what they think a reasonable number is before they need to be replaced. Uh, five-year warranty is as long as you can get right now. Um, and in, even in the county's RFP that's about to go out, they're asking for five and ten-year. They're not really expecting anybody to be able to respond with a ten-year warranty. Uh, so it's, again, it's still very new in terms of, uh, what the technology, how long it'll last. And, um, you know, when the EVI chargers came in, I'm gonna get, get it wrong, but they are so much lower voltage than very run-of-the-mill EV chargers now. So just in ten years, the, uh, amount of voltage of an EV charger is drastically changed, uh, which will increase the speed of charging. So there's just rapid evolution in the field.
Yeah, so just to, just to close the loop, um, if we know we're planning on adding that capacity and we have to have the capacity to have the vehicles, does it seem like possible that we could shift our budgeting and look at the ERR as a place where we put in, we fill that pot of money, knowing that we have to pay for chargers out of that as well as vehicles?
I wouldn't see any reason why not. It's a piece of equipment that the city will own.
Thanks.
Great. Well, thank you so much. We really appreciate, um, your, you and your staff's continued effort to, uh, not only make sure that we have, uh, equipment that works, but moving towards our climate, um, goals as well through electrification. So thank you so much. All right, so we are almost there, folks. Next is procurement of a leaf vacuum.
Uh, and unfortunately, this one is not available in an EV model, or we'd be bringing forward that to you, uh, this evening. I know that I've gotten that question from council members and have, I think I've answered most of, of the questions that have come in. Um, we've spoken, uh, we, we for a very long time had a sole source supplier of our leaf vacuums. Um, and, uh, they're, over the last couple of years, a competitive company, uh, is also manufacturing, uh, the type of, uh, leaf vac that we use. Um, so it's, uh, it's not a high-volume item. And so high-volume items like that are not the ones that are going to get the new technology. The options you have are diesel or gas. Uh, we select a diesel because the maintenance costs are lower, the operating cost is greater. Uh, and we do have the ability to do the, our biodiesel, um, eighty-twenty mix of, of, uh, soy and, and diesel fuel. Uh, so, um, what we're proposing to replace is, uh, one of our, uh, leaf vacs. Uh, again, they are in the equipment replacement reserve. We have them, um, intended for a ten-year life. Uh, some of them can last longer than ten years, um, and they tend to get, uh, stick around as spares. It's again, one of those pieces of equipment that's only used for a small window of time, but it's used very intensely uh, over that five-week period of leaf collection. So it is a piece of equipment that really gets hard work in the, in the, um, hours that it's used. Uh, so we still feel like a ten-year window is a pretty reasonable, um, replacement, uh, age for that. Um, the nature of the vehicle is such that they don't have an EV engine for the vacuum, uh, and fan blade, um, operation that the, the leaf vac itself does. So we are, um, not able to transition that particular piece of equipment at this time. Uh, we've had conversations with our vendors about, are you looking into it? And all they have available right now is an electric-bodied vac, which is kind of a standalone, drive-alone vac, a very large piece of equipment with a stationary, uh, vacuum, uh, component on the side that doesn't move like our hoses move, it just is in place and you rake to it. Um, and interestingly enough, the equipment, which is over two hundred thousand dollars, has an EV motor, but the vacuum component for the leaf vac is still diesel or gasoline. So it's not even fully EV. Uh, so I'm not sure what it is about the technology that is, uh, a challenge for that. Uh, they've, they've crossed that threshold with mowers and sweepers and trash trucks, not so much yet with the leaf vacs. So all that's to say that we are, uh, recommending replacement of one of our, um, ten-year-old, uh, leaf vacs with the new one. And, uh, we've got two prices, uh, to compare against and, um, recommending that we go with the low bidder.
I am, Councilmember Schlegel.
Uh, yeah, I, I think I sent these questions, but I don't think I saw answers, um. Um, so you definitely addressed why is not feasible to purchase an EV leaf vacuum. Um, I think that, I'm thinking about the movement towards leave the leaves. I don't know how much that's taking off, but I know a lot of people are talking about doing it. I understand the purpose, the, the core purpose of the leaf vacuum program is to protect our stormwater system and the, and the drains. But I wonder, like, is there a way to measure, have you measured or even anecdotally seen a reduction in the practice people raking leaves from their yards into the right of way that otherwise wouldn't have washed into the right of way? And are we possibly getting to a point where we might be able to, in that same five-week period, cover more ground with each leaf vacuum and essentially get it done with four? So it would basically, like, if we reached a point where there were twenty or twenty-five percent fewer leaves on the street and on the sidewalk, maybe we would be there. And where do you see us in that sequence?
Some extensive information. If you didn't see it, uh, I will, I can happily send it again. I included some graphs and some historic information, two thousand nineteen till now. Um, and what you'll see is that our volume of leaves has changed, though it's all, uh, fairly consistent over time. It has more to do with weather, um, than anything else. Um, I know one of the big campaigns I started on decades ago, when I started working for the city, was backyard composting. So we've been advocating backyard composting for leaves as well as other things for, for a very long time. And in fact, we used to provide, in fact, the county still does, composting bins, we had composting workshops. You know, so this is not a new thing that's, um, suddenly been developed. It's been around forever. Um, and, uh, what tends to happen is people will, each makes their own individual decision. Um, if you, if you happen to come by our public works facility in the middle of or at the end of leaf collection, you'll get a better understanding about the volume of leaves that we pick up. Um, when I tell you that five hundred tons of leaves is a massive amount of leaves, uh, I'm not kidding. Um, and when you see our piles, they've typically run through our grinder. So they're about a third reduced, two-thirds reduced than what they look like when they come in from the field. Uh, so because of the, you know, good problem, because of the high-level canopy we have, lots of trees, um, we have a lot of leaves. And, um, for many residents, it's more than they can want to manage in terms of backyard composting a, at home. Uh, I've become an advocate of mowing my leaves in my yard now, and now I try to proselytize that to others as a way to do it because I hate raking. Um, so it works for me, but it's not gonna work for everybody. Um, last year was the first year we handed out the, uh, I'm a Leaf Saver, um, sign, sign placards. I, I think we bought two hundred. I think we gave out sixty, and I think we do two per household. Um, so, uh, you know, in terms of the over, almost four thousand households that we're collecting yard waste from, it, it's a, you know, incremental, uh, incidental, uh, amount. Uh, we'd love to continue and, and we certainly have that available. Um, it's in the newsletter, it's, um, in our leaf collection mailing, it's on our website. So we, we advocate for people who, um, are so inclined to, to, uh, consider composting their leaves for their own, um, lawn health. And, um, we'll continue to, you know, support that program. Uh, in terms of whether it will make much of a dent in, in our collection needs, um, it, it may, some small percentage. Um, but it would take, it would have to take a seismic shift in order to reduce the kind of, uh, staffing or equipment needs we have. And I also just wanna caveat it that we used to have, um, uh, a longer program. We used to have a seven-week program and we had six routes instead of five. So we've already, based on the amount of leaves that we collect, cause we're very, we're very familiar with exactly what our, um, needs are during leaf collection. It's a very high priority item for us, kind of like snow removal. If there's one thing you wanna get right, it's you wanna get leaf collection right, you wanna get snow removal right. Um, it, it's so based on, uh, falling volumes of leaves, um, you know, we, we propose that we reduce the amount of temp staff that we hire and we reduce the number of, of routes by one. So we, we do keep an eye on that and we track, uh, we now have a scale that we've had in place since two thousand nineteen. So when I tell you we have data, we've got tons of data. I know what each truck brings in, how many, how many loads it brings in a day. I've got spreadsheets that show all that and we compare it year to year and sit down for an after-action review with the staff. So we're, we're very familiar with, uh, the program itself and we are always looking to how to improve and how to make it more efficient. Um, whether or not we can realistically see a reduction in the staffing levels or vehi, uh, vehicles needed, equipment needed. I, I certainly haven't seen that, um, though, you know, I'm happy to be surprised. Uh, but we still wanna continue to advocate for that. Um, and then the last thing I'll say is that our program does turn that compost mulch back available to the public. I mean, one of the things that has to happen for a successful program for ours is all the leaves that we collect in vacuum leaf collection and yard waste that gets processed at Public Works, that's all gotta be out of there by the time November seventeenth rolls around. We can't have piles of mulch still available. So everything that we get in, in the fall leaf collection goes back out again to Tacoma Park Yards, Silver Spring Yards, other yards. That's why we do the delivery program. So this is not something that's being wasted. This is a resource. We're treating it as a resource. And it's very critical for everything we pick up to get processed and then, uh, it, be in use. Uh, cause if I've got mulch piles in my leaf yard, um, November seventeenth, I've got a big problem because we're, we're about to get a mountain of, of leaves.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Councilmember DeBala.
Yeah, that, that was my question and you've answered it. And I wanted to say thank you for sharing the data with the council members because that helped me to see the impact of the program. There were need plenty, plenty of reasons to do the Leave the Leaves program. Um, but I, I agree with you. From what I saw, it's not moving the needle volume-wise enough um, to affect, um, the roots and the, and the, the number of people that need, that you need and the number of pieces of equipment you need to deliver the service, uh, not at this time. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay, not seeing any other lights. Thank you very much, Director Brethwaite, for staying late tonight to walk us through these items.
Um, and so our last item this evening, um, is the, um, the working group on committees, um, has, uh, would like to come back, uh, come to the council to talk about options to address noise complaints. Um, given that it is almost eleven o'clock, um, what we are hoping that the working group will do is introduce, um, this item today and I will, um, this evening, and I will make sure to add a work session for next week. Um, so there could be a little bit more time, um, and people will be of fresh minds, um, to discuss. Uh, so I just wanna make sure that my colleagues are okay with that approach.
Councilmember Schlegel.
Wonderful. So with that, I'll turn things over to our, our working group, uh, that consists of Councilmember Schlegel, Councilmember Hanzak, and Councilmember Gilbert.
Okay, and I'll, I'll start us off and invite my, uh, fellow working group members to chime in. Also, I invite incumbents to chime in on anything we, we misrepresent historically. Um, but I, I'm also gonna assume that if you haven't read the cover sheet and the attachments, that you will, now you will get a little extra time to do so or to do so more carefully. I'm not gonna go over everything that's in here, so I'm just gonna hit a few highlights. First of all, um, the, the noise control board, um, is, is basically the, the, the essence of what we're focused on right now. Um, the board is, is charged with assisting and advising the city on noise control issues. Um, and, uh, it consists of up to seven active members appointed by the council for three-year terms. Um, in two thousand twenty, and, and the history is really quite important here that you make sure you, you sort of comprehend the, the history. The history was that in two thousand twenty, um, the, the city council that I was not on at the time, they, they, uh, looked at all of our city, uh, committees, um, very purposefully and very intentionally, looking at increasing their efficiency and their effectiveness, um, and attracting new members and looking at new ways, um, to engage residents. And they did a lot of work on this issue. I took some time to, to dive into some of that. Um, the mayor helped enlighten me and, um, Ms. Carpenter as well, because she's been with us for a long time. Um, and. And, and so in two thousand twenty and two thousand twenty-one, the city council had all of these work sessions that, that looked at these different changes and improvements to committees. And that also impacted specifically on the noise board. So you can see the two thousand twenty-one resolution, and I don't know that we necessarily included that here, but you can look it up. You can see the link. The hyperlink is on here. I do invite you to take a close look at that if you haven't, as we deliberate on this issue, because I think it, it helps give some context to where we're at right now. Even at that time, there was a decision by that council to put this on hold and, and, and then look into what, what they were going to discover moving forward. So right now, the issue that we are seeking to solve, that I hope you could think about over the next week in particular, is that we are out of compliance with the current code, AKA, we, since two thousand twenty-one, we did not, the subcommittee, this Working Group, even before Councilmember Schlegel and Councilmember Gilbert, I happened to have been on that subcommittee Working Group with Councilmember DeBala and another council member who's no longer on the council. And we decided in the last term that we also wouldn't reconstitute the noise board right away as we were looking at options like mediation and sort of trying to figure this out. And it just kind of kept getting pushed back, in part because we didn't have any active noise complaints that were really, you know, calling our names and, and demanding that we, that we take action. We, we still don't have more than one, but we do have one, and it is sitting out of compliance. And our, I, I think it bears sharing, that our code, we, we had the opportunity to talk to our code enforcement officer and some of our other staff, and our code enforcement team said, you know, I'd like us to be in compliance. It's, you know, it's not convenient for me. That makes sense. So if you'll go ahead and flip to the appendices, and I'm, again, I'm not going to go, go over all of these, or the attachments, excuse me, the attachments. And if you'll flip to page two, I'm going to just go ahead and look at the options that we're considering before us, and I'll let you read, read on some of the other issues. So these are the options we've got before us. We can, and we're looking to hopefully move fairly quickly on this particular issue in, you know, in the coming weeks. One, option A, we could reconstitute the noise control board. And again, I'm not going to go over all of this. I think you can read through it. There have been a number of challenges with having a noise control board, which is why it was tabled in the first place. Okay? But, but it is in the code that we have one. So option B, we could deputize an existing city committee or board. We specifically talked to staff about the idea of assigning an existing body like COLTA that's already an adjudicating body. I, I can tell you that the staff did not necessarily favor this option, but it is still something that we could discuss. The city attorney has told us that it is legally permissible, but it, it is, they did outline that, and again, we can share their rationale for that more directly with anyone who is interested in looking at that. And, okay, I'm going to skip to option C. I think you can read some of the things here, which is to designate the city council as the noise board, which could be a fairly quick action that we could take without going, particularly given that we have very few cases before the noise board currently. However, I think the city attorney in particular has advised us against this approach, although he also didn't identify any legal constraints to that. So I, I want to point out too that, that it does risk, there are some risks that we've outlined here. You can read that, you know, politicizing neighborhood, neighbor disputes might strain some of our council capacity, but everything comes with some disadvantages. Then option D, we could defer action until we revise the ordinance. We could stay like we are right now, have no active noise board. We could integrate mediation, which is what we're already considering. It just may take some more time as one of our formal options. And then we could look separately at some of the issues that we know definitely do arise, that, that could not necessarily always be resolved through mediation, such as dwelling-to-dwelling noise issues, which I know that Councilmember Gilbert is, is hoping to talk to us more about, if not now, in a future session. And I think we have one more option, flipping the page, which is to dissolve the noise control board permanently and reassign the adjudicatory responsibilities to particular departments in the city. So for example, we already have code enforcement officers. We already have folks that they report to, and we have our police that also regularly go out and enforce the code. It is possible that the code could be rewritten in order to simplify that structure. So I invite you to take a closer look at this memo, reach out to any of the Working Group members and ask questions. And now I just want to open it up to my two colleagues if you have anything particular to add, or after they've spoken, if the incumbents would like to share anything, that anything is critical information here as we deliberate. Let's go ahead and do that. Thank you.
Councilmember Schlegel?
I think Councilmember Hansak covered it very well. I'll just reiterate that we have one outstanding two-party nuisance noise complaint that was submitted, I believe, last fall or in the early winter. And it's, so we're out of compliance, and that, I mean, that is a concern when there's a, there's a, there's something in the code, and there's supposed to be redress, and there isn't right now. There, I'm also aware of two other cases along, adjacent to New Hampshire Avenue that could, that could develop in that direction, where I know of more than one person in each. I'm certainly not encouraging it, but I know there's more than one person who's concerned about a nuisance noise.
Thank you. Councilmember DeBala?
Yeah, just a couple of quick things. On option D, integrate mediation, the previous committee got as far as identifying a potential group that would do it, and I think got not as far as getting a price. Councilmember Hansak, is that right?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay.
We have actually, though, spoken to Conflict Resolution Center subsequently, but not, not anything related to money. No. And, and at present, you know, all their mediation services are free, so I'm not sure, you know, particularly given the scale of what we're talking about here. I'm not sure whether that's on the table, but, you know, we haven't really discussed that yet.
Okay, so then one thing I would ask the committee to think about between now and next week is whether that is also a short-term, potentially short-term solution for the one outstanding noise complaint, and then also if it's been around since two thousand twenty-four, has anybody checked to see if it's still alive? So those are two things I'd bet, just to speed this up for next week, that I wanted to comment on tonight. And then it almost seems like the dwelling-to-dwelling, the multi-unit buildings is a whole separate conversation, but that's just, that's for discussion. That's not a factoid for next week. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember DeBala. Councilmember Landman?
Yes, I think my question is that it's not clear to me why noise as a neighborhood nuisance would be treated differently from other things that might potentially be subject to mediation or some other form of resolution, why it was signaled out to have a noise control board in the first place. Hence, my question is really why, you know, it either does or doesn't violate an ordinance, in which case it would be subject to enforcement, or alternatively, if it's something that requires mediation, why would we not consider having it be referred to the county's mediation program? And, and so my question really for the group that considered this is whether you evaluated it from the standpoint of something, you know, you know, how, how noise wound up being the one thing that we decided as, in terms of neighborhood nuisances, ought to have its own special control board versus being, you know, pardon? And, and you know, I, I guess that's when, one of your options was eliminate the, the noise control board. And, you know, to me, that, I guess that's, that's what I'm getting at, is why, why symbolize noise? You're nodding your head, Mayor. Seriously, I guess I wonder.
Yeah, I can give you a little.
That predates. It predates, it predates us on council. So it's my understanding that the city, prior city council had passed a noise ordinance that was based on, it had requirements that relate to the decibel or like the sound of the noise or the volume of the noise. I think it might have came up, it might have originated with, maybe it came up, I don't know. I think it was Councilmember Schultz, Ward Six, the infamous megaphone preacher, right? So if you've ever been to Ward Six on a Sunday and just wait around preachers from parking lots with megaphones, and they're just, you know. So, so, but the ordinance itself was more focused on the decibel levels, like basically having the police come out and like actually measure the sound. But that's a little different from if you're looking in the code nuisance aspects of it. So whereas decibel level is very easy for us to come in, police department can come in with the, with the sound meter and assess how loud a sound is. But the code at the time, they were also trying to capture nuisance in like sounds that are annoying. They may not reach the decibel level of being being out of compliance with the noise ordinance in decibel, but the, the way in which the sound is happening can be a disturbance.
And, and I can finish your sentence, because then it becomes a subjective thing. And so if one person said, there's this thump, 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 and it's really bothering me, and they said, oh, well, it's under sixty-five decibels or whatever, then there's no recourse. But that's why if two people at different addresses both sign the same complaint, it's called the two-party complaint, then it, then it's not an objective measurement. It's a subjective attestation by two different people, that they're both annoyed by this thing. And then for that, that's the kind of thing that the noise control board is set up for. And Councilmember Gilbert, I saw you, you might have had something more you wanted to say about this.
I think that the word that the mayor was struggling to find probably was the intermittent noises that aren't really, that are chronic, and, and we don't use a decibel meter to measure them in, in those complaints. There were plenty of them during my career. I'm not sure in relationship to other complaints or nuisance complaints, but there were tons of noise complaints, and that may have been the reason.
It does seem like something that is actually better resolved by a mediator, is not one of your neighbors. The more you say, the more I think it's.
And.
Yeah, and Councilmember Landman, that's, that's, because at the time, because again, this, this particular board has a long history. When we were going through the process, Councilmember DeBala, me, you and Councilwoman Tossia, we were going through all of the committees, all of the boards, looking at what they were charged. It was a committee survey, like, we actually captured information from both on the various boards. And one of the things that we had heard when we were speaking with board members for the noise board was there were so few cases, like, so to have a standing committee, and they were never really being tapped to do much, and, and even if they were tapped, they felt like they were kind of being a mediator between neighbors, that, you know, when we offered, say, hey, let's, let's go ahead and move forward with letting you all finish out your term, and then we'll figure out what we're going to do next, they seemed open to that, because they were kind of sitting around waiting for something to happen that didn't really manifest. And then at that time, which is also evident in the resolution that Councilmember Hansak cited, we were also on the cusp of doing work with the Public Safety Task Force, and there were concerns around race equity, concerns around a noise board and how it could be weaponized or how it could be used. And so one thought was, okay, let's see what happens with the Public Safety Task Force and those recommendations that come out, and see how we ultimately want to deal with this noise thing. And that's when the next group came along and said, you know, we really should maybe align a little bit more with the county and move down this path of mediation. And then that's where we kind of got stuck. And, and during that whole, all those years, we, we didn't have anything, although people might have wanted to report, we didn't have anyone actually report until then.
If I could just add another few issues. One is, so, and just as background, so my, my parents are professional mediators. They, that's how they make their money. So I was, like, born and raised on mediation, trained as a mediator myself by force, ironically. I know, it's wrong, right? The things that happen in a mediator's household. No, but I mean, one thing that's important, though, is that with mediation, it cannot necessarily solve everything, right? I, I mean, that, that is important to remember, because A, you could have, you can have mandatory mediation, right? But you can't mandate that it gets resolved, because a mediator's goal is not to be an arbiter, like a judge, right? They don't, they don't, they don't listen to the two parties and then say, and then if the parties can't agree, they don't then say, well, here's the decision. It's called an unsettled mediation. And so, so then that is a challenge for resolving things, because a solution has to be found in these cases of some sort. You know, someone has to say, it's over? Thank you. We've, we've considered it, you know. So, so that's, I think that's one of the challenges that we were facing, with the mediation doesn't solve everything. And then the other thing that the mayor alluded to, that I think, I want to share with everybody, because I only learned it once I got on council, and, and I had originally drafted a little bit more extensive race, race and equity section, but I'll just share this anecdotally. I learned, let me just say, from, from being on prior council and from going through some events in the city myself, that there are some very real issues that happen in our city. I'm sure you can all speculate, but I'll give a very specific example. A couple of events that I was involved in, it only took, you know, one or two people to complain about the type of music that was being played. And, you know, that happens to be a little bit more cut and dry in terms of decibels and noise policies. You know, you can get a permit, but let's just say it was just a resident doing that. Well, I mean, that has happened historically in our, in our city. It does happen. Unfortunately, I think it happens a little too often. And there's just a lot of issues about power and race and your right to have quiet that I think are deeply disturbing personally. And, and I, I would like to see us solve this in a way that is sensitive to those issues and, and really that we feel like we're, we're doing right by everyone by doing so, so that people can't constantly say, I, I need a good audience. Because one of my concerns is that, in, in theory, a noise board is, is by definition, someone who might sign up to be on a noise board, might, might, I think, might choose to do that because they find noises annoying. I mean, they might not, but it is very, like, like Councilmember Landman, like you said, it's very specific kind of nuisance, right? So these, so coming into the noise board, you might have an opinion. Maybe you have the opposite opinion on a noise board, but it seems like it would be useful to have a, whoever is considering the issues not come in predisposed one direction or another, but just, you know, be as open-minded as possible, right? That's where I got the idea that COLTA might be a, a nice idea, but, but it's, it does come with some serious complications, too.
Councilmember Schlegel?
I'm sorry. Yeah, I just, I think it's important, we should have mentioned this. Mayor, seriously, you said that, you know, it's such a narrow scope of work for this committee that they were sitting around like, oh, I forgot I was on this committee. So we actually did arrange meetings with staff. Staff were very helpful. And we, we looked at any other possible kind of subjective nuisance issues that may come up in different realms, such as, oh, their, their vegetation's coming through the fence and, and honestly, there's no other judgment calls that aren't already handled well by code. and honestly, there's no other judgment calls that aren't already handled well by code in, in a way where you can make a black and white decision. This is the only one where you, you want to validate that someone truly is annoyed by a noise and that it's not in their heads because someone else signed the paper too. But there really aren't any other kind of cases we could find that the city has to try to deal with that are the same as this. And, and Councilmember Gilbert does report that this comes up a lot in dwelling to dwelling situations.
Councilmember DeBala, and I just want to remind everyone, we will have a work session on this next week.
Yeah, I, I, I thought that we were not talking about. Now I'm trying to remember where it was. Yeah, so with the, it seems to me that, that I'd really like to talk about this multi-unit building noise issue next week in some, in some depth. The other question I was going to ask before is whether the, so you talked to the staff of COLTA. Did anybody talk to any of the members of COLTA the last time around? You did and they weren't crazy about it, but that was years ago.
It was my understanding that the response was that they weren't thrilled, but they would under our direction.
So they're open to it.
It wasn't my understanding that they necessarily talked to the members of COLTA. I'm looking at Deputy Eubanks. I know they talked to the staff that worked.
We reached out to the chair and I don't know that we got a response. I'd have a problem with Mr. McNally.
So as I stated, we will, and I'm looking at the clerk so we can make sure we put this on the agenda for next week to continue this discussion. And so just as a reminder for everyone, our goal during the work session next week is to whittle down these options to provide the working group with a, a smaller number of options in case there's additional information that they need to gather to bring back so that we can ultimately move forward with determining next steps for addressing and getting into compliance regarding the board.
Right? I was just wondering if we ever asked MML if they had any suggestions around the discipline that.
This group didn't meet with MML?
Yeah.
Okay, seeing no more lights. Thank you all so much. Everyone have a great night.